All right. Good evening, everyone. It is the ninth of February 2021. And you are gathered with the Athens Clark County Mayor and Commission and staff members and some special guests for our special called session and monthly work session. I'd like to ask the clerk if she could go ahead and kick us off by calling roll.
Davenport.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Link. Link, I see you. Wright.
Here, I'm here, sorry.
I'm present, Wright's present.
Denson.
Here.
Present.
Edwards.
Present.
Myers.
Here.
Thornton.
Here.
And Handby.
Here.
We have a forum.
Oh, thank you, Madam Clerk. I appreciate that. All right. As we get started with our special called session, we have just a single item of old business, which is a rezoning request for 2,400, 2,480, and 2,490 Lexington Road. Obviously discussed this at length in our agenda setting meeting and our meeting of a week ago. Commissioner Parker, this is in your district. I know you've done some additional work on that and had some email correspondence with the body. If you want to describe that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to you.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I hope that you all were able to take the week and consider, if you get more time, the oversight agreement, which has now been executed between the developers and Athens Land Trust with regards to the affordable housing. And if you all had any questions related to that, were able to work out those things. I wanted to give a shout out to Heather and her team for their hard work in the last week or so of getting that together. And I feel like, you know, with this project, we have, you know, as Mayor Gertz said, had a lot of discussion about it both in the Sunday session, our voting meeting last week, and so I'll try to be brief here. In essence, I know there's a lot of things to balance and figuring out how to regress the housing crisis that we're facing as a community. And it's tricky, messy work that requires some trade offs. And I think that here we have done a good job of balancing those forces, both in taking off some of the pressure that has been placed on our in-town neighborhoods with regards to gentrification, as both students and young professionals who can't afford to live anywhere else disrupt the fabric of some of those communities, inflipping some of those single-family homes into student residences and the like, in balancing the pressures of the importance of adding workforce housing, and then in trying to secure community benefits and responding to the concerns of those who already live in the communities nearby. As for the concerns of the residents, those who do live nearby, I've had the opportunity to engage with them over many months regarding the project and including some in recent days. And I think that we have been very responsive to some of their concerns regarding some of the ecological impacts of construction, both of the project at large and with regards to the walking trail that is proposed for the area. I was able to speak with the developers in recent days and have them move that walking trail out of the riparian area, which I know for some nearby residents was a big concern, some of the impacts of trail construction on the shady brook, you know, of the name, et cetera. And as well, just thinking back to the way that some of the buildings have been completely redesigned in, you know, in talks with residents about concerns around noise mitigation, that the fact that with the riparian buffer, there's like 150 feet between the start of any construction and development in any home nearby. I feel like a lot of those concerns have been addressed with regards to parking concerns, the number of parking spaces that were added to the development in response to residents' queries into that matter, enhanced landscaping buffer and native plans that have been added to the plan. And in addition, in recent days, in addition to some of the work we've been doing, you know, since, I guess, September to try to address some of those concerns, I know that the electrical vehicle charging stations in the development was a question that some of you had and some of the residents had and conversations I had with them over the weekend. And so I was able to get the developer to agree to double the number of charging stations in the development and confirm that they have the flexibility to add additional charging stations as demand increases there. So I feel good about all this. I know there are lingering anxieties, but these will always exist as our city grows because, I mean, the unknown is scary. There's only so much you can understand by looking at plans and having conversations, but I feel like we've done that robustly. And so I will motion that we approve the rezone and welcome any additional comments or questions that my colleagues may have.
And Commissioner Parker, you're referencing the commission-defined option with those elements enumerated.
Yeah, for the commission-defined option with the addition of an increase from four to nine for the number of electric charging stations and the requirement that the walking trail be outside of the riparian zone.
I'll second that.
Further input. Commissioner Myers?
Hey, all. I appreciate all the work that Commissioner Parker's done, and I think ultimately we have the similar goals for the community, but I'm not going to support this. And I want to explain this carefully. I've done a lot, a lot of thinking about this. And in fact, I wrote down my points here since, oh, and I might have lost them here, since I'm so bad sometimes at covering all my needed points. So let me just go over this. I'm not supporting it and urge my fellow commissioners to do the same. I think we can do better and still get affordable housing. And I want to review the facts as much for the public as for each other. I think a lot of people on the east side are just paying attention to this in the last week or so. Right now, these 41 acres are zoned for single-family with five acres on Lexington Road for commercial use. That means that whoever owns the land can put up five single-family homes per acre of buildable property. They can also build retail and offices in the property right on Lexington Grove. They don't have to ask for approval to do this. They can build by right. The company behind this development that we're reviewing tonight is Trinitis, and they're asking for permission to develop on this property in a way that goes against our present land use and zoning for this area. Reading from their website, Trinitis is an owner, investor, developer, builder, and manager of university-centric commercial real estate in major universities through the U.S. Trinitis currently owns and is developing approximately $500 million in mixed-use and multi-resident housing with an additional one building in its development pipeline. It's multiple student housing complexes in 14 states. Instead of building a right, Trinitis wants us to rezone this property from single-family to high-density multifamily zoning so they can build 500 units with 1,058. This is one of their largest student housing complexes in the nation. And let's be clear, they are building student housing. They plan on having a van running to campus. They persuade us to change the zoning. They're sweetening the deal by adding some really needed affordable housing, about 61 units of studio, one- and two-bedroom housing, affordable housing. Even with that change for multifamily zoning, they need more variances to build higher and to build even more density. Trinitis does not own this property right now. They have an option to buy on this land. Their commitment here is to their profit, not to our community. We can do better. Instead of letting developers drive land use for the Lexington corridor, we as a community can drive this. We can build the sense of place that the 2015 Urban Institute's strategy to redevelop and revitalize the Lexington Road corridor says this corridor needs, and we can incentivize the building of affordable housing. This is also what the Planning Commission and Planning Department are recommending and part of why they voted to deny this request for rezoning. I have more to say, but I'm going to let some other people speak first and then I'll cover my other points. Anyway, thank you for letting me share this. And again, Commissioner Parker, I appreciate your work on this.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other input? Commissioner Link?
Yeah, I'm supporting this project and for a lot of reasons. And I understand the concerns, you know, that the folks, some of the folks who live very nearby have, but I also feel that the benefits of this project far outweigh those. You know, we've gotten quite a few emails from folks stating their objections, and I found that almost all of them are highly misinformed. There seems to be folks complaining that this is being built in the riparian buffer. It's not. In fact, there's additional buffer in addition to the riparian buffer. You know, there's complaints about this being all student housing. It's not all student housing. There's actually a significant number of workforce housing. There's complaints about this being low-income housing. It's not. It's median-income housing, workforce housing designed for folks like us, you know, teachers and healthcare workers. There, I took a new look at our Planning Commission's recommendations for affordable housing, and there are so many policy changes we need to enact throughout this community to encourage the construction of affordable and workforce housing. And this is exactly the kind of project that we do need to encourage. Not a whole bunch of them, but we do need to encourage these pockets of density. This is what suburban retrofitting is all about. You know, suburban development was encouraged by this sprawling, single-family neighborhoods, which were actually born out of racist intentions, you know, as a means of getting around fair housing and desegregation laws. And this is a way of righting some of those wrongs of the past by encouraging a more diverse housing. So we're gonna have some workforce housing, some apartment buildings, and yes, student housing. We are overwhelmed in the downtown area with student housing. We are overwhelmed in North Athens. We really need to find new places in our community that are appropriate for student housing and are also convenient to campus. This is only a couple miles from campus. It's one mile away from a commercial intersection that has, is very underdeveloped. There are several underdeveloped out parcels in that Lowe's project. There are, there's a former Wynn Dixie that was converted to storage units. Obviously, there is not the kind of density of residents in the area to have supported a grocery store. So if we add this density, maybe we'll get a grocery store back in the area. You know, there's pawn shops, there's thrift stores, there's dollar stores. I know a lot of folks on the east side complain that, you know, they don't get the kind of local businesses and restaurants and shops and stuff that they want in their community. Well, this is one way to encourage this. You'll get a real infusion of economic means by adding this pocket of density. You know, you'll, these students have money, and they'll shop locally if those shops are there. So I feel like there's, there are way more pros than cons to this. And I hear people saying, oh, put it somewhere else. Well, where else? The Lexington corridor is very much inhibited by the fact that we've got airport zones along the entire north side. You can't develop dense housing on the north side. We denied a project just a couple weeks ago that was a perfectly reasonable workforce project, but it was too close to airport landing zones.
Thanks, Commissioner. I do want to hear from some other folks, but certainly be glad to circle back. Commissioner Handby?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. And I'll stick to my three minutes there. I did, I did just want to say, you know, I read the comments as well, and I thought, I thought folks who wrote, took the time to write to us made some very, very good points. And to the point that some of them weren't correct, I would say at our, at our last meeting, some of the things we were saying weren't really correct about the project either. So, so we're all on the same page there. But I will say this, you know, going from an RSA to an RM2 is quite a jump. And, you know, the east side is, you know, when you talk about student housing, if there's an area of town that has more student housing than any other area of town, and I'd say it kind of rivals downtown would be the east side. Just go down Barnett Shoals, go down, go down Lexington. There's, they're building a new big one down from what Commissioner Myers told me, down by Walmart now. So, so, or where, where, where would you say it? You can correct me. But, you know, the east side has its, has its share of student housing. And I, you know, I appreciate the fact that there would be some workforce housing in there, but in order to get that, you have to get another thousand beds of student housing in there. And, you know, I mean, at what point can we just, if we're going to start looking at our inclusionary zoning or our workforce housing development patterns, we need to be consistent and we need to be making sure that we're not doing some sort of commission quid pro quo type, type things where you do this, then I'll vote for that. I mean, that's not, that's not the way we do land planning. That's the way they did land planning in the 1980s, and that's why we're trying to fix some of the things we're trying to fix these days. So I think, I think, you know, we just need to, we need to hold ourselves to a higher standard when it comes to workforce development. If we want workforce development and we want to give incentives for it, let's do it. We don't have to, we don't have to, we don't have to allow for a four-story building next to a single-family neighborhood. I mean, the Planning Commission has a right. They pointed out, you know, there were almost up to 10,000 bedrooms being built for multifamily that are in the, in the pipeline. Now, now we should focus on those affordable, maybe of those affordable, single-family homes that could fit into an RSA. When we look at zoning, planning staff made this point in their report. What, what case needs to be made to rezone this piece of property? What, what, you know, why is it zoned wrong? And is what they're asking. And I asked the same thing. I mean, it's zoned RSA. It's zoned to where if somebody wanted to put some single-family workforce housing there, then let's help make that happen without having to have a four-story building next to a single-family home and a single-family neighborhood, or allow 1,000 bedrooms of students there. So just my thoughts on it and appreciate you listening.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other input on this? Commissioner Hool and then Commissioner Denson?
Thank you, Mayor. I find myself in another parking deck type scenario where I've arrived here undecided a bit. I think there's a lot about this project that's far from ideal. And I also think that there are some things about this project that are really promising that I'm really grateful the folks on this body have really worked to make happen alongside others in the community whose focus is primarily on affordable housing. I guess I'll share my thoughts in a second, but I did have a question I was hoping Manager Williams might be able to speak to about sewer capacity. I know that, you know, thinking big picture about this corridor, there's a need for us to have a broader study. Could you speak, Manager Williams, to the capacity the corridor has for, you know, if this project goes in place, still handling other development along the corridor?
And also, I know we got Rick Calwick on the, on the line and give him a second to look that up. But I did consult with our Public Utilities Director, and he did, of course, review the case. And as did our, one of our, another one of our registered engineers over there, and they didn't see any red flags with it. So they feel like there is sufficient capacity. As far as the long-term growth of the corridor, I can't really speak to that, but just this particular project in general, specifically rather. Rick, I don't know if you have anything that you care to add to that for that question.
Just to repeat what you said, the Public Utilities Department did review the plans, and they did say that the, there is adequate water and sanitary sewer services for this development. That was the extent of their comments.
Okay. And when they consider a development like this, are they factoring in the potential for other development along the same line that could be built by right? Or is that separate and ultimately going to be left to that master planning?
Well, I would say that you're right. There's sort of a stair step of capacity, right? You get to a certain point and it's going to require bigger diameter pipes. And I would say that I know that this, members of this commission were familiar that a study was done like that of downtown because that's where you tend to get more higher-density development. And there were some concerns about that. I do know, Rick, that we've been looking at some growth concept maps that we want to bring to y'all for consideration for some additional density outside the downtown area, which would include some on the east side, not too far down from this area we're talking about, as well as the west side over by the mall. So just to answer your question, I'm sorry, Commissioner Hool, we are close to, you know, having discussions like that. I'm not sure that we've got any analysis we could share at this point. And Rick, I don't know if you have anything to offer either side of that.
No, I really can't add anything else at this point either.
Okay. Well, I might ruminate on that for a second, but I think what I'm taking away from this is that we have the immediate ability to meet the capacity needs for this development and that we're already preparing for meeting the greater, greater needs that are likely to come down the road. Is that a safe summary?
Yeah. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I guess I'll, maybe if I can just loop back in a bit later, Mayor Gertz.
Okay. Thanks, Commissioner. I'll move over to Commissioner Denson.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'll just be brief. Like a few other people said, I mean, I don't think this project is definitely not perfect, and it has some flaws, but I agree with Commissioner Link that the benefits that we're getting out of this make up for, make up for those flaws. And, you know, speaking, speaking to the fact of needing a study, and I completely agree that we need to be, to have a more comprehensive study of this corridor, which I lived along for, for years and drove down, rode the bus on every single day and saw the lack of development, the lack of the, the goods and services and stores that that region deserves. And while we need that study, our history of studying things does not show action follows those studies oftentimes. This commission has been very, very good. This government's been very, very good at studying things, and I think less good at following through on those studies. And so I think if we put a requirement of having to have a more comprehensive studying of things before we can move forward, I'm very afraid that we'll just never be moving forward in many of the regions of this county that we need to be moving forward. And then to the, to the bigger problem of using this to fill some of the need for workforce housing that we have, again, just looking at the history of this body and the community and the way the development has been happening, right now, this is, these kind of few opportunities are kind of some of the only ways that we have to fill that gap for workforce housing that's been shown. While we might have every once in a while, the bigger projects like North Downtown Athens and Bethel that we're going to be talking about later, those are extremely rare and expensive. And for us to really fill this need for housing and diverse housing, especially towards the lower-income thresholds, we're going to have to be working with developers to incentivize the development of that workforce and affordable housing. Otherwise, it's just not going to happen. And our history just shows that. It's just, and I'm hoping that we can be figuring this out fast. I know Inclusion Arizona, we're working on that, have that come forward quickly. But kind of what we're doing right now, I think, is maybe the, us experimenting with that. And, you know, I have to appreciate Commissioner Parker's work and getting a lot of good benefits, community benefits out of this. So while this might be a flawed project, I think that the benefits giving us outweighs those flaws. So I encourage my fellow commissioners to approve this.
Thanks, Commissioner. Others, for a circle back. Commissioner Thornton?
I was very excited when I first heard about this. I sent Commissioner Parker my congratulations and support. But as time went by, there were more questions than my enthusiasm kind of dwindled. Now, I'm going to agree with Commissioner Denson. We go through all of these studies and nothing gets done. And so it looks like we got to settle for, for something less than we could do. I am not for any more studies. I want us to do things, but I don't want to vote on something that I know is flawed, which also Commissioner Denson said there were some flaws. I don't want to vote knowing. Now, if there's some flaws and we find out later on, that's one thing. But to vote on something that I know got some cracks in it, I have a problem with that. I got excited when I think Mr. Smith spoke about working with the residents in that area. Come to find out, there was only one meeting. Now, there may have been meetings later on when this became a heated object, I mean, a heated discussion, but there was one meeting. There, there, there was one meeting. And then to add pieces to it just to get our support, I think that is wrong. And I think that everybody's intention is good, but I don't see why we have to be led by developers. We should have a plan. If we need to have that inclusionary package done, let's get it done. If we need to take, do a vision, what we want Athens to look like in 30 years, let's do that. Let us have a plan, put it on the table, and find out what developers want to buy into it. I am, I'm having concerns about the development on Prince Avenue, the Prince Avenue project. I have one resident who has put her house up for sale because some of the promises were not met and kept with that project. That was before me. That was before Obita. So these developers are not vested in this, in this community. We need to invest into the people who expect us to do what's right. We need to move those barriers out of the way with these studies. We need to have a vision of what we want Athens to look like 20, 30 years from now. I will go one step further, which is very sensitive in our clothes. I imagine, I imagine when there were conversations about Lennetown, it was the same conversation.
Now, I'm going to agree with Commissioner Denson. We go through all of these studies and nothing gets done. And so it looks like we got to settle for something less than we could do. I am not for any more studies. I want us to do things, but I don't want to vote on something that I know is flawed, which also Commissioner Denson said there were some flaws. I don't want to vote knowing. Now, if there's some flaws and we find out later on, that's one thing, but to vote on something that I know got some cracks in it, I have a problem with that. I got excited when I think Mr. Smith spoke about working with the residents in that area. Come to find out, there was only one meeting. Now, there may have been meetings later on when this became a heated object, I mean, a heated discussion, but there was one meeting. There was one meeting. And then to add pieces to it just to get our support, I think that is wrong. And I think that everybody's intention is good, but I don't see why we have to be led by developers. We should have a plan. If we need to have that inclusionary package done, let's get it done. If we need to take, do a vision, what we want Athens to look like in 30 years, let's do that. Let us have a plan, put it on the table and find out what developers want to bite, buy into it. I am, I'm having concerns about the development on Prince Avenue, the Prince Avenue project. I have one resident who has put her house up for sale because some of the promises were not met and kept with that project. That was before me. That was before Obita. So these developers are not vested in these, in this community. We need to invest into the people who expect us to do what's right. We need to move those barriers out of the way with these studies. We need to have a vision of what we want Athens to look like 20, 30 years from now. I will go one step further, which is very sensitive in our clothes. I imagine, I imagine when there were conversations about Lenin Town, it was the same conversations, except it was a black and white thing. But it's the same conversation when we do not include the residents, the developers, the commissioners, our planning department. If we don't include everybody who is vested in this, we're missing something. No, we can't make everybody happy. I'm not suggesting that. But I'm just kind of shocked because when I came on this board, developers were like the bad, the boogeyman. I didn't even know why. But now it looks like we're yielding to something when we could do better. I do thank Commissioner Parker for the work she's put in this, but also thank Commissioner Myers for doing that double down research. We need to know who we're doing business with long-term. I, I was hoping we had the 90 days. I don't think we should be working on their time schedule. We should be working on the community's time schedule. But one minute you want one thing, and then when it turns around, you flip it when it's convenient. The same conversations we've heard about the downtown, historic downtown, Lenin Town, it's going to be the same conversation somebody's going to have 20 or 30 years about this project. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Anyone who has not spoken yet? Circling back, Commissioner Myers and then Commissioner Link? Muted, ma'am.
Let's get this mutant down. Okay. Okay. Here's my, the second half of my comments. Instead of improving this development, I want us to be more proactive and approach, and an approach that lets the community have a voice in the development of the corridor. So let's follow what the Urban Institute Plan lays out, which is not another study, it's action. Let's create a shared vision and a comprehensive corridor master plan, revise the zoning, consider inclusionary zoning to incentivize affordable housing or an ovalay zone. That plan also says it needs a community champion for this movement, and I'll take on that role. Let's get control of the development in this area and the town in a way that benefits more of our residents. Perhaps the university needs more student housing, but let's be real, we need more low and middle income housing in Athens for the people who work here, raise families and retire. For those who say that downtown doesn't have to have all the student housing, let's remember that east side is inundated with lots of student housing. Icon, Woodlands, the Summit, Woodsong Village, Polo Club, the Reserve, Haven, to name a few, renting from $500 to $800 a room. What we don't have on the east side is quality multifamily developments for middle income Athenians like me, a retiree, or my fellow east side commissioner, Patrick Davenport, a young professional, or for young families. Let's rezone to encourage that kind of dense development and set up incentives that encourage affordable housing to be integrated with them, not segregated upfront like in this project. This property will get developed. That's not a question. It will not lay fallow. We will have other chances. And I want to bring up a couple of other points. There's also still some unanswered, unanswered questions about the effect of this huge 1,500 bedroom development on the environment and the county infrastructure. One resident who wrote us describes how there will be about the same number of people in this development as live in the city of Wind develop. Commissioner Hull asked about it. There is limited sewage capacity along Lexington corridor with the eight inch pipe. That, and the zoning was there to work with that sewage infrastructure, and that's partially why we have a single family zoning, according to a former commissioner. How will our allowing this project affect what we can be built on other pieces of property that people own and have investments in? Also, the development greatly reduces the tree cover in this area. There's a tree canopy plan, but it's important to note that it's non-binding. In addition, we do need to be building for the future. Eight electric charging units is more than four. It's not a lot for a place with over 1,000 beds and won't be enough as General Motors switches to only electric vehicles in 2035. That's just 14 years and the White House has EV cars for everyone as a goal for 2035. Finally, there's the effect on the neighbors. I want to make clear that these neighbors, nor the many District 8 residents who have contacted me, are not against the development on this property, but they want a thoughtful development that reflects the values of the community and that includes affordable housing. Again, I urge my fellow commissioners to deny the request and move forward with a comprehensive corridor plan, rezoning and development incentives that'll serve the residents who have committed to Athens for the long haul and create affordable housing that we desperately need. Again, thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Let me circle back to Commissioner Link.
Yeah, I just want to remind folks that, you know, if we don't start approving some of these denser projects that do include student housing in locations other than downtown, we're going to continue to see pressure on downtown. You know, where we are overwhelmed with student housing, to the point where there are plenty of folks who, from, who have families and kids who aren't even going downtown anymore. You know, we really need to approach development in our community from a diverse perspective, understanding that we're going to need these pockets of density and we should encourage diversity in our housing choices, which I believe this project does. The fact that it includes workforce housing in a project that has student housing. And there's no guarantee that that student housing is going to be all student housing, you know? It's not exclusive to students. And anybody who has issues with a four-story building, you know, being a thousand or so feet away from single-family homes should just take a walk around Boulevard or Normal Town. You know, we've got to face the facts that this is life in the big city. We're a growing community and we're going to have to figure out how to grow and that's going to, growing pains are real. You know, we, I feel like we've got to weigh the greater good and those growing pains. And I also want to add, you know, the fact that this project includes a stoplight is a lot. There is a desperate need for traffic calming in that area. A stoplight would achieve that and stoplights are extremely expensive. If we have a developer who's willing to shoulder that cost, that, that's an additional bonus.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Hamby?
Thank you, Mayor. And I'll be brief. I, I just wanted to point out, you know, for, for those who are thinking that approving this is going to alleviate the pressure on downtown development or anywhere else, or, you know, you're just, it's just, it's, I believe you may be mistaken because the pressure on downtown is going to be there, but it's up to us to control that pressure. It's up to us to control the pressure anywhere and make sure the development's right. We don't have to give in to the pressure. But I will say this, a number of years ago, we had this transfer development rights conversation going on about 10 years ago. Well, actually, it's longer than about 10 years ago. It's probably about 20 years ago, where you, where you wanted the density downtown and you wanted the green space on the outskirts of town. So there was, there was that, those TDR discussions taking place. So, you know, downtowns naturally have the density because that's where, that's where, that's where, it's not going to alleviate the pressure. The students, they're going to want to be downtown, but we can do things to control that pressure like we have done and make sure that we do things like some senior housing that's coming along and stuff like that. So you don't have to give in to the pressure anywhere. But we also need to start looking at, you know, the planning commission denied this, the planning staff recommended denial, and now we have residents around there asking us to deny this as well. I'm hard pressed to think of, of where you had the sort of trifecta of, 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 of sort of opposition to, to, to a project like this. I mean, it usually, usually you have two out of three or one out of three, but this is three out of three. And as Commissioner Thornton said, if there's flaws with this project, don't vote for a project with flaws in it. I mean, we don't have to do that. We don't have to, you know, we don't have to, we don't have to go down that direction and settle for things if there's flaws in it. And we can, we can expect better and we should expect better. And, but anyway, good, good discussion. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any others? Commissioner Thornton?
This is my last comment. We're at a crossroad and we've been here for a minute and I've been saying it since I have been on this commission. We have to work outside of our circle. We're talking about student housing. We don't even have a conversation with the University of Georgia. I didn't, I don't know why that is. We're talking about developers. What do developers even know what we envision as a commission? Or do they just come and give us a cookie cutter plan? We cannot represent our constituents fairly and openly and transparently until we build these relationships. I am not against developers. I am not against UGA. But I do know that we are not talking to these folk. And now our constituents, our voters, our long-term residents are suffering because we have not done our due diligence. And when it comes in your, and it's in my backyard saying, I get it, I totally get it. But it, but I do think that talking to residents, hearing residents, that should be our first priority. And one conversation, one conversation at the beginning does not constitute a working relationship. And I don't, and the other thing, we, we, we respect the land trust. Actually, I found out because these are going to be federal programs, HUD will require those kind of check-offs to make sure that people meet those financial deadlines. So we like to say that about the land trust or involve them because they have a great reputation, but this is, this was not mandatory to happen. You just give us things that you, that you think we're going to bite. That was not mandatory. It still could have been done. So I think we should think about the people who elect us and where we want to see Athens 20 or 30 years and that we won't be coming back asking for a resolution, a resolution because a community has disappeared.
Thanks, Commissioner. Any others before we move to vote? All right, I know I've got a motion from Commissioner Parker. Was there a second to that motion?
It was me.
I've got a-
I seconded.
Motion from Commissioner Parker and a second from Commissioner Link. Madam Clerk, can you go ahead and call the roll for us, please?
Mayor, we need two votes on this because we've got the future development map and the zoning ordinance.
Thank you much. So Commissioner Parker, could we do a vote on the future development map first?
Yeah. Motion to approve the amendment to the future development map.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, I guess I need to read these again out of abundance of caution.
Commissioner Hull?
Yeah, sorry, I was raising my hand, but maybe I was off your screen.
I apologize. They dance around.
Yeah, I'll try to be real brief here, but I just, I guess I want to share why I've personally come around to voting reluctantly yes on this. I feel like we've painted ourselves into a corner. I think the way we yield to development is by letting them build housing by right that is luxury housing, and that's what we have, an abundance of proliferating around the community. And we're facing an affordable housing crisis that is getting worse by the month, and it's been a huge problem. When I think of the constituents that I've most engaged with, it's been people who can't find an affordable place to live. And a big, and a big part of that, I think, is that students are gentrifying neighborhoods that families could move into, especially in the area in Commissioner Parker's district. I've heard that, I've heard her speak to that multiple times about this development and others. And so I think of this less as a nod to the luxury student housing portion of this development and more as a way of freeing up some of that single-family real estate that's currently going to students for families to move back into. And the workforce housing that's added into this development itself, I don't feel is a standard that we should use moving forward as the best standard. I don't think anything about how we've gotten here is ideal, but this government has failed to face this problem on the policy level for years and the crisis has only gotten worse for people. And so, you know, I guess ultimately, like, I don't like anything about how we've kind of been rushed on this timeline at the end, it feels like. But I don't want to let process preclude progress and I don't want to let perfect be the enemy of good. And while I think there are real problems with this development, I think it does, it meets a need that is much greater than this development is. And hopefully it moves this body to act swiftly on those inclusionary zoning and other policy changes we need to incentivize better developments in the future and to define a process for developers to exercise those incentives so we're not tackling these things ad hoc. Because I agree, this is a messy and bad way to get here, but I do feel like this is ultimately something that I'm going to vote yes on. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Judd, if you could go ahead and read the, the future land use component?
I just had it. Hold on, I lost it when I flipped. Okay, ready. I believe this is the first part. "The ordinance to amend the code of Athens, Clark County, Georgia, with respect to rezoning a parcel of land comprising approximately 40.93 acres located at 2400, 2480 and 2490 Lexington Road from CGRS 8A Commercial General Single Family Residential Airport Overlay to CGRM 2APD Commercial General Mixed Density Residential Airport Overlay Plan Development and for other purposes. And the other ordinance is as follows. An ordinance to amend the code of Athens, Clark County, Georgia, respect to amending the official future development map of Athens, Clark County by changing the designation of three parcels of land comprising approximately 40.93 acres located at 2400, 2480 and 2490 Lexington Road from general business and traditional and traditional neighborhood to general business and mixed density residential and for other purposes." So, Mr. Mayor, I actually read the future land last, so you need to identify which one you want to vote on first.
All right. Thank you, Attorney Drake. Commissioner Parker, could, could we first vote on the future land use transition?
Yes. So, is that, that's the motion I just made, isn't it?
It would be a motion to amend the future land use as, as read by the attorney.
Yeah. A motion, a motion to amend the future land use, ma'am.
I'll second it.
All right. And Clerk Spratlin, can you begin a roll call with Commissioner Parker?
Parker?
Yes.
Link?
Yes.
Wright?
No.
Denson?
Yes.
Hull?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
Myers?
No.
Thornton? Thornton? No, no, no. I'm sorry. Hamby?
No.
Davenport?
No.
Five yes, five no.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'm going to vote yes in the affirmative. Certainly agree that any, any transitions are difficult because they are transitions. You know, they, they take us to a place we haven't been before, but I give great credit to Commissioner Parker for balancing the interests of the community at large, you know, with the particular contours of this property in terms of management of the outside buffer elements, in terms of the layout, and in terms of providing both some relief from the development pressures that exist countywide, which are undeniable. We've moved from a university with about 30,000 units, 30,000 kids, students, to a university with about 40,000 students in about 16 or 17 years. And obviously, we have, as many folks have noted, an affordability crisis that is deep and dramatic. Do want to note that moving forward, I'll be signing next week sort of a narrower frame of the inclusionary zoning charge that first went to the planning commission and that we received a report on a couple of months ago, so we can systemically provide for the kind of opportunity that Commissioner Parker has developed organically. Because I think I, everyone agrees that, you know, we want clarity for the public at large, we want clarity for the development community, and we want clarity in our ability to garner new affordable units in a matrix that just makes sense and works and functions. So know that that's coming forward and that's going to follow some conversation about this and our planning commission's overall special projects activity on Friday, where we'll talk about that at our retreat. So make, make those notes by way of an affirmative vote for this project. and our planning commission's overall um, special projects activity uh, on Friday. We'll, we'll talk about that at our retreat. So uh, make, make those notes uh, by way of an affirmative vote for this project. And uh, now Commissioner Parker, uh, can you make a motion for um, for the commission-defined option zoning change?
Uh, I make a motion to approve the commission-defined option for the zoning change.
I'll second that.
Alright, got a motion from Commissioner Parker, a second from Commissioner Link. Um, Clerk Spratlin, could you call a roll, please?
Parker?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Wright?
No.
Denson?
Yes.
Hool?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
Myers?
No.
Thornton?
No.
Hamby?
No.
Davenport?
No.
Five yes, five no.
Uh, again, I'll vote in the affirmative. Thanks, everybody, for uh, all, all your work on this. There's a lot more work in this arena ahead, certainly. Um, entertain a motion to adjourn the special called session.
So moved.
Second.
Alright, I've got a motion from Commissioner Parker, a second from Commissioner Hul, all in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, we'll now move i- into our work session, um, slightly revising the, the order to begin with a discussion of Firefly Trail Phase Three. So I'll turn it over to the manager.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. Good evening, and uh, we have a number of things tonight. And I've asked our speakers to uh, try and get through their presentations within fifteen minutes. And then we'll, of course, take as much time as you'd like. But with eight items on the agenda, uh, we're gonna step through these. A lot of important things happening. And uh, the first uh, this evening is to talk about Firefly Trail Phase Three. Uh, a look at different alignments and bring a recommendation to you. Uh, this will, uh, obviously not for any type of voting tonight. That would happen on March the second as the planned uh, agenda item. And Derek Doster, our Splos Project Administrator, is here to present. Take it away, Derek.
Thank you, Mayor Wisdom. It's a pleasure to be with everybody tonight. Uh, I'll go ahead and share my screen to go through the presentation. Again, as the manager said, this is for our alternative alignment and preliminary plan recommendation for the Phase Three section of trail. Um, again, tonight is to, to look at alternative alignments and bring a recommendation for that section. You know, the Oakmont subdivision, uh, that's the, the only remaining section of the trail that you have not approved to this point. Won't read the history. Um, just as a quick reminder, the Firefly Trail, um, anything that you see in blue and red has either been built, uh, is under construction, or you've already approved. So we'll be speaking directly tonight on that small little section, um, right outside the Winterville area, just to the northwest and encompassed by the green line. Just a blow up of the area. Um, back last fall, uh, when we brought the preliminary plan approval for Phase Three to you, uh, there was some concern of the area, um, shown on the map. Um, and we were directed, our staff was directed uh, to, to analyze a couple of alternatives to bring back to you for consideration. So we, we looked at that. Uh, we had public engagement opportunities for, for the public to, to reach out online and in person. Um, and then we've had several meetings and comments from uh, different advisory groups, and we'll share those with you here shortly. A couple of uh, comparison alternatives, uh, we tried to provide an apples-to-apples comparison um, on those. On the alternate A, uh, of course, is the historic rail bed. Alternate B, um, along Moons, Moore's Grove, along the south side. And alternate C, uh, Moore's Grove section on the north side. Generally speaking, the uh, trails were, a- as previously discussed, uh, alternate A would require potentially up to three um, outbuildings to be removed. Um, alternate B along Moore's Grove, uh, the establishment of their, th- this removal of established trees in the front yard. And then alternate C, um, generally di- uh, the demolition of the existing sidewalk and removal of, of some small trees or, or established trees around several homes. We would be in front of two businesses there. A couple of other points to note, that um, alternate A would um, need some extensive storm drain improvements. And alternate B and C, uh, most of the storm drain would be addressed along the roadside. So, several, several components there for your consideration. Part of our public engagement summary, uh, the public comments. Uh, when, when just asked what their preferred choice alignment was, uh, the alternate A was the preferred choice. Um, you can see that the data is, is it broke out for second choice and last choice. Uh, we tried to develop just a more matrix or a more holistic score, and we assigned a three points to the preferred alignment. Second, secondary alignment, we assigned two points, and the last choi- last choice, we assigned one point. And when you combine the math, the scores uh, still provided alternate A with six hundred and forty-three points, with uh, alternate B and C being close, with alternate C just, just edging out, you know, matrix approach. A couple of general comments, um, we had two hundred and sixty comments by two hundred and forty-eight of, uh, to provide comments for us. Uh, alternate A, of course, the most direct scenic route, um, upholds what some would have considered the proposed vision of the trail. Um, it does harshly impact several property owners, and there's privacy concerns of the area near the rear of the properties. Uh, stormwater concerns. Yeah. Alternate B, the most uh, adjacent route. Uh, there is concern, safety concerns with vehicle collisions. Uh, numerous impacts to front yards and, and some parking areas and driveways. And the route has the most driveway and road crossings. And then alternate C, you know, it's, it's, it's near a high-speed thoroughfare, so further away from the road than alternate B is. Uh, provides a future link to Coal Middle School. And then we have a, no scenic view from the trail user's perspective. And then due to the existing sidewalk, it has probably the least impacts due to the trail adjacency to those, to those structures. But in alternate C, just as a reminder, does have a mid-block crossing or a highway rural road crossing um, up to get back to the, the trail alignment. This is our dashboard that has the public engagement on there. Uh, the, with the link is the, the hyperlink at the top of the board. When you, when you click it, you can scroll through and see all the two hundred and forty-eight comments. Um, we wouldn't really present that well tonight, uh, to try to show you those. But we've provided that to you via the uh, previous information that was sent. And if that was not, if it didn't come through, it didn't work for you, we can get that information back to the manager's office. So you can see the dashboard, and we'll get that out on the public link as well. Our advisory groups, um, you've seen the Firefly Trail recommendation. They provided a letter back in December. Um, their recommendation was alternate C. The Athens AdMotion Commission recommendation, uh, provided in January of this year, uh, recommended A. And then on January twentieth, after the public engagement period, uh, the Firefly Trail User Group, uh, recommended alternate A after cer- um, considerable con- uh, conversation about the, but the pros and cons for each one. Uh, just an overview map of the plans. Just a cross-sections of different sections, depending on where they were, for the alternative analysis. This is where alternate A, the recommended, alternate would be picking up, uh, from the previous information that you, or previous plans that you'd already approved. We would move through the historic rail bed alignment. We get to this kind of congested area, um, some areas that have, um, existing structures. And have some, the areas for considerable, uh, consideration for additional adjustments for the storm drain um, across these next couple of pieces of property. We'll try to highlight those areas for you. You know, we generally return uh, to the, to the rail bed and continue on cross-court and circle. And, and we, as the roadway shifts back down to a thirty-five mile an hour area, we, we shift the trail back over to the public or closer to the public right-of-way to complete it. And in there, alternate A at the signalized intersection. Uh, one of the things that we'll be bringing for you for the agenda report is the recommended alignment and preliminary plan approval. Of course, the manager mentioned the March second vote. Um, that'll, that vote will allow us to concentrate our resources on the final design of the preliminary plans, uh, preparing your right-of-way documents, obtaining the necessary title opinions and appraisals, uh, begin the land acquisition, uh, negotiations, uh, with the, any impacted property owners. And then, uh, if necessary, to complete the project, uh, we would bring back, of course, uh, any, any effort that we needed to, for consideration of any domain or combination efforts. And then after all the land acquisition is completed, then we release the documents for bidding. And I'll turn it back over to the manager for-
Okay, Mayor, I'll turn it over to you to, to field any questions or comments.
Alright, thanks, everyone. Um, obviously, we're, we're really excited about uh, completion of Firefly through its entire Clark County journey. Um, and uh, I know many of you have taken a look at the site itself uh, to lay your eyes on the ground and, and consider the, the alternates here. Uh, certainly be glad to o- open it up with any comments that uh, anyone would like to provide. Uh, Commissioner Link?
Just have a couple of questions to start off the conversation. Um, the railroad bed was abandoned in nineteen eighty-two. Um, does anyone know when the railroad actually stopped running? Does anyone?
I, I, I understand that it was in the nineteen eighties.
So it, it stopped running, it was abandoned shortly after it stopped running. Um, cause it, apparently it was abandon, it was actually abandoned in, in eighty-two. Um, so the co- the concept of the Firefly Trail and the discussion um, that the local government initiated about it, when did that gain approval? Does anybody have any clear idea of, of that? Like, when was that, when did that become official?
S- s- so we're talking about a period about twenty years ago.
So maybe two thousand-ish?
Two thousand or in, in, in the couple of years following. Um, that, that was around the time that the county began some level of land acquisition, including the um, the, the, you know, what, what's commonly thought of as the murmur trestle.
Mm-hmm. So the properties that are on Carney Lake Road were built in the sixties, as far as I can tell. Um, and so they were built with an active rail line running through their backyards. And from, from, according to the tax maps, even those outbuildings pre-exist the abandonment of the rail line. It like, those outbuildings were like right up on the, the railroad, a- as far as I can tell. I, I just wanted to put all that out there and, and, you know, for some context um, as to the conditions on the ground when the, the railroad itself was actually running trains through, through this area. Um, the properties on Oakmont are another story. They were built after the um, railroad was abandoned.
Thanks, Commissioner. Are there thoughts? Commissioner Myers?
I just have a cou- couple of questions. Um, I started thinking about uh, this the other day, because there's a lot of the questions really having to do with the, the people who are, are not happy from the public comment on options B and C really have to do a lot with the safety that you get from option A. Um, and I ride my bike out there all the time on that road, which when I hear people talk about how fast the cars are going, I guess I'm, I'm, I'm taking a chance each time. But there's more and more development in the Winterville area. Um, there are several um, building projects going up where there are housing developments coming. I know that Commissioner Davenport had a, had a, a, a development that was being proposed for out there past Coal Middle. But there's other ones all around Winterville, and they're going up, and they're selling fast like hotcakes. Um, that's also, that road is a uh, a road that people from the Hull area use to cut over to the east side often. And so I was wondering if there are any, any projections for traffic um, for the future were included in the study, Derek? Um, or, or we have any future projections for traffic there? Because up until I thought about that, I was thinking about the traffic now on Moore's Grove, and then I'm like, oh, you know, what's gonna happen to the traffic in ten, twenty, thirty years as that area develops? Because that's a pretty main route. Um, you know, I wouldn't want, I wouldn't want to have my, my Firefly crossing Timothy Road, right? So there is development coming in that way. Do we have any projections on the traffic in that area?
No, no, ma'am. I, I'm, w- we did not, we didn't, we didn't develop any traffic analysis and for future consideration, we just looked at existing conditions.
Okay. Um, also, on the, can you, can you address the buildings that would be impacted on the uh, option A again? Uh, there are three of them?
Yes, ma'am.
Which are the three of them, on which properties?
Alright, let me reshare. I apologize.
Just again, I just wanted to go over this.
This, this property right here, uh, belongs to the Bunts family. And um, the bottom left-hand structure, um, is a, it's, it's, it's a shop, it's a metal shop. Um, it, it'd be in close, such close proximity, the grading and whatnot, we'd have to, um, to, to remove that and, and properly, um, address that situation. The building to the north, um, is a, a shed that belongs to the neighbor, um, Ms. Huff. And that, that structure itself, um, trying to, you know, the preliminary plans, we tried to, to try to split the difference and squeeze through there. That's a structure we identified for, for potential removal. Um, again, final plans, um, if there's an adjustment that could be made, then, then we could try. Um, and then just to the right-
On that one, does that structure, is that in the railroad bed? Or are we moving the trail over that way to avoid? I thought we were mo- when I was out there, we were moving that over to avoid moving that other structure. But now it sounds like both of the structures would be removed.
It, it, at this point in time, to, until we finalize the design, um, we're gonna keep both of them as, as potential. Yeah, um, again, if you remove the, the bottom one completely, it may give you a little bit more flexibility to, to, to save the other one.
I ju- I just have real qualms about that woman's house because that's such a big part of her backyard. Um, that, that's my ru- one of my real concerns with uh, the A option. And then the other building, could you talk about that a little bit more?
It, it's to, it's just to the right. It's a, it, it's another shed. Um, it's another small wooden shed. Um, that's possibly a, a structure that could possibly be relocated, but would have to look at it a little bit more structurally and with the property owner to make sure if it could be slid to a different area or relocated to it, or if it needed to be removed completely.
Any follow-up questions, Commissioner?
Well, I, I, I just, when we're, when we'll be voting on this, we won't have any more information about whether or not which, like Ms. Huff's property, how that will be impacted. Cause that was a, that was a big concern for me out, being out there. Because I'm not sure how much the neighbors across the way, how much acreage they have. But I know that she's on, you know, it's just a, a city lot there. Um, and so that's, that seemed to be an awful lot of her property, and that's, that was a big concern of mine.
Thanks, Commissioner. O- other input? Uh, Commissioner Denson and then Davenport.
I, I think Mr. Davenport has his hand up first, so you can go ahead first.
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner. I just, and, excuse me. I do want to walk people through a, um, Mayor, if you'll allow me some extra time, or if I can give someone else's time, that'd be great. I do want to, um, thank all the people who participated in the user groups and who provided comments. Um, but I do want to, to walk people through what, what's actually going on over there with option A at this point. Um, if it were, was to be built, um, I just want to-
Commissioner, do you want Derek to put that map back up?
Um, yeah, that, that-
Of that segment in the residential section?
Yes, that would be perfect. Or people, you know, people at home, they can go to Google Maps and, um, go to Athens Road and Moore's Grove Road. So it is not to belittle all the, the voters, because there are a lot of voters who, who didn't realize some of the economic impacts and some of the, um, well, some of the, um, didn't realize that this trail was literally going through people's backyard. And it's not to- And it's not to belittle them, but I just want to explain to people what's actually happened. So if you look at Moore's Grove Road and Athens Road, there's, at the corner, there's a little shop. It used to be an old gas station, but right now, at that corner, there is just a small little shop, but on weekends, they have farmer's market. So if we go with alternate A, that farmer's market would be gone. So nobody will have a place to set up, or would have a place to park. But the bigger, the bigger issue is literally right behind Oakmont Circle and Carney, Carney Lake Road residence. So, so, and I really think that, and I really encourage citizens, residents, who want to go, who like alternate A, to actually go back there and take a look. Because I think, you know, Derek Dawson has done a really good job, but I think there's a much bigger picture that's going on that people need to visualize, to actually see. Or for starters, at, so for starters, you look at the, the rail bed, it is almost like a J. You can picture a J. So the water is going to pool, and pretty much, if we put concrete down on grass right now, all it is is going to create a river. Because the, the rail bed itself sits in a pocket. But one of the issues, one of the residents, is the fact that this trail will literally split his backyard. And as well, it will be less than about five to six feet from his pool. Move a little further, or Derek Dawson showed a picture of a, a little shed that may potentially be moved, there's another shed that's behind it. So literally, the, the trail bed will, you know, alternate A will split this man's backyard, his, his horse shed, as well as his utility shed. Moving up further, you have that large garage structure, and then there's another garage structure next to that. So there's a much bigger picture that, that has not been explained here, as well as Mrs. Huff's garden, as well as her shed. And there's a huge, massive drain issue, stormwater in that area as well. And every resident of this area has said that they would like a privacy fence, I call it a wall, to, you know, to, to go into their backyard, because they, these people, literally, this trail will be 25 feet from people's back doors. As well, considering the fact that like, you know, alternate C has a much bigger, a much bigger economic impact. And the mayor of Winterville likes alternate C, there's a school that's right up the street, they, there's potential plans to tie in and extend the Firefly Trail with a sidewalk to the school. Because right now, people in the Oakmont subdivisions and in the surrounding areas, the kids walk on grass, you know, go through the bushes just to get to school. And we got to really start thinking 20, 30, 40 years down the road, when we're all gone, how much bigger of an economic impact that alternate C is going to have. I'm hearing a...
I'm hearing a...
Somebody, okay. But, um, do, am I the only one hearing the double? Okay.
You getting an echo?
I can hear it too, Patrick.
Okay. But what I'm just trying to say is the fact that like, C has much better economic impact for the community, even, even, and when I even actually talked to the resident, went door to door to all the individuals, there was only one resident who, who was concerned about alternate C. But everybody that I spoke with liked C, but there was only one resident who was, had concern about alternate C. And her concern was the fact that we had to pull up her holly bushes, and that she didn't want dogs using the bathroom in her yard. So we got to think about the residents, you know, and I understand that there are people all throughout Athens who, who are, who are invested in this. But from a residential perspective, from an economic perspective, the cost of A is going to be astronomical once you start digging. And just C is, even though the price is at now, C is still going to be the better option.
Thanks, Patrick. Go ahead and turn it over to Tim and then circle to Melissa.
Thank you, Mayor. Mine was just a, a, a quick question to Derek, I guess. Have we looked into, is there a possibility for that strip of area there that goes through those residences to be narrower? Is that something that we've looked into to make it possible, where it gets, the trail narrows a little bit there?
We, we've looked at that opportunity, and I'm not saying it can't be done, we just have to be careful on, on how much you reduce it with, the trail section through there is, is about 12 feet wide, so trying to, you know, going down a smaller amount, you know, 10 feet, it could be workable. I, I just want to be careful that it doesn't eliminate the majority of the effort for construction and grading and such like that.
Yeah, I definitely agree that we don't want to err it too much, but like 10 feet, I think, could be something that, that would be doable, I would imagine. And again, since we're talking so close to like what Commissioner Myers brought up, we'll be able to somehow try to keep as much of this building, especially that tight squeeze that's there, that's all it also. You know, it might be that that two feet could be, you know, kind of the, the difference-maker, though. I, I think that'd be a good thing for us to at least look into.
Good, Melissa.
I'm wondering if staff could kind of separate the comments, so we can get a better idea of the, the leanings of the comment coming just out of the Winterville area. You've got, the heat map shows, you know, a, a strong amount of comment coming from, I guess that's downtown or west side of downtown, and then a strong amount of comment coming from, directly from the Winterville area. I'm interested to, to kind of separate those comments and get a better idea of how Winterville residents feel about this, because quite frankly, they're the ones who are going to be using this stretch probably more than anyone. And I also, I, I do want to echo Commissioner Denson's comments about the, the possibility of narrowing the trail, moving it over just, you know, even 10 or 15 feet, particularly where it backs up against those Oakmont properties. Because I do feel like those are very close, the houses are very close, and those houses were built in the between period, between the time when the rail bed was abandoned and the concept of the Firefly Trail was created. Whereas you do, those Carney Lake properties, they were already there when, when the railroad was, was running. They, they had a train running through their backyard. And I, I would like some clarity to, to find out about these, these outbuildings. It appears that these outbuildings even predate, or at least the ones on one of the properties predate the abandonment of the rail bed. So it seems like once upon a time, there was a full-on freight train running right up against these outbuildings. So I, I'm just trying to get some context to, to the history of the rail bed, the history of the properties, you know, and, and folks knowing what they were getting into. I know one of the property owners just bought that property five years ago, and, and that was when this, this whole concept of a trail going through, all the way to the Winterville and beyond was well-known and sung from the mountain tops throughout Athens.
Well, yeah, sorry, Mayor. We're just going to say... Could everybody mute for me?
Go ahead, Blaine.
Thanks, Kelly, Mayor. So we will take, make an effort to break apart those comments, Commissioner Link, as you've asked. Derek, I'll, I'll refer to you on the second question, on the history of those outbuildings. I'm not sure that we have access to that level of information, short of looking at sandboard maps, but I can't think of any other way to get to that.
See, I, I saw Commissioner Hool, and then I think Commissioner Davenport was going to follow up.
Thank you, Mayor. A few thoughts and a few questions. I, I really want to thank Commissioner Davenport. I know that he's led a number of groups out there to try to, you know, organizing with the residents, and that's, that's no small feat to try to make those happen, so thank you very much for doing one for, for myself and Commissioner Wright a few days ago. It was, it was really good to get out there and see it on site. I would strongly encourage anyone who hasn't got a chance to do that to, to try to do so before we decide. Because it was very illuminating to see some of the stuff firsthand regarding any of the, the route options. My top concerns in this, probably in this order, are safety and then cost. I, I think that, you know, there's some good reasons to consider the trail experience being probably a more pleasant one in the woods, but it's a short enough stretch on the trail overall that I don't think that, to me, that doesn't seem like the predominant issue here. It's more about safety along that roadside and crossing that road if, if we go with B or C. And then if we stick with A, compared to B or C, I'm really curious about costs, and I understand that we probably can't know exactly what costs of acquisition of property would be. But I would love to see, and if we already have this broken down, great, we could talk about it here, but if not, if we could be sent, like an enumeration of where those cost estimates come from. Because while we're out there, it's clear that there's structure removal, tree removal, I think fence construction needs to be considered, because it seems inevitable if we go with A, that there's going to, there's going to be that as a cost for us. And then the, the big one that's really sticking out to me is stormwater infrastructure, and, and perhaps to the degree that this attractive nuisance concern that I heard some residents there raise about the retention ponds that are on their private property affecting their insurance, you know, I'm curious how that would affect our insurance versus their insurance, and, and whether that's factored into the costs as well. And then if we go with B or C, obviously the cost of utility relocations. I, I just, I feel like it would be really helpful to understand what that is, to make sure all of that's getting factored in. And I'm most especially thinking about stormwater. So to me, the two most compelling arguments that I heard from the folks who are directly impacted by A, the first was, some of those structures, especially the really, the largest, hardest-to-remove workshop, was built in the 90s, so like many years before the, the Firefly was being discussed. At least that's, that's what I was told by the, the resident who owns it. So I think, you know, that's something worth considering. I mean, it's not displacing someone's living space, but it is a, you know, a major impact on, on part of their property. But the flooding there is pretty incredible. And so I'm just, I have, I have a hard time imagining how we build a trail that people can actually use without doing some major stormwater work. But then similarly, and, you know, I'm certainly not the engineer here, so I feel like someone playing it out for a dummy like me to understand simply would be helpful. But along alternative C, that roadside, where the trail would go, it's got sidewalk in the beginning, but then it's, it's largely a stormwater ditch for about two-thirds of that stretch. And so, you know, I'm just curious how we're anticipating meeting the stormwater needs of that roadway as well. And then in terms of safety, I, I'd really like to understand clearly what we're going to have in place if we go with option C, in terms of that crossing at that intersection, to ensure that it's actually a safe crossing for people to walk and bike across. And also for people to be along that roadside, if we go along that corridor, that there's enough of a buffer that you don't have people walking or biking right next to a road where, I mean, just in the time that I was there with Commissioners Davenport and Wright, there were vehicles going by quite quickly with oversized loads and trailers. Patrick actually had to jump out of the way at one point, so, so I, I really don't want to set us up for having a trail that sends people along a roadside that's not only unpleasant, but like ultimately dangerous to, to be moving along, so. So those are my concerns. If any of them can be spoken to right now, great, but if not, if we could be sent that stuff by email, that'd be fantastic.
Derek, is there anything that you'd respond to either around stormwater management on Moore's Grove? Should C be the route that we go? Or the, or the distance between the, the trail itself and the vehicular traffic on Moore's Grove?
The, the distance between, say on alternate C, well, we've got an average of about 20, 25, 20, 22 feet, I believe, from, from edge of pavement out to the crest of that road, just on beyond the backside of the, the existing sidewalk there. And as far as stormwater is concerned, there's some additional stormwater work would need to be done, but I believe it, it's, it's minimal along the Moore's Grove Road area on the C-section. And then, of course, we've already mentioned that the alternate A alignment is, is, is an extensive area. And again, this is one of the reasons we bring preliminary plans to Mayor Commission, to make sure we properly put those resources into play.
And is that, I guess, if there's something that maps out that stormwater mitigation plan, I'd really like to see that, you know, because I definitely heard the residents saying that if this thing's built where they don't want it, they're not inclined to cooperate with that stormwater mitigation. And so if we're relying upon cooperation there, you know, that might be something we need to think about, too, the costs that would be incurred with that. And I, I also just want to share, and then I'll kick it to whoever's next, sorry, that I really don't like, what I guess we'd call like A2, that deviation. I feel like, you know, the cutting through that person's yard and getting off the rail bed to do it, I, I feel like that loses the whole point of sticking with A in the first place, which is to stay on the rail bed from like a legal perspective. And, and it really just seems like a, a bad thing to do to someone who should have had no reason to anticipate that that would ever happen to their property, so. So I have a lot of empathy for that particular property owner having that level of imposition on their, on their property if we went with that alternative A. Anyway, thanks, y'all.
Thanks, thanks, Jesse. Allison?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too appreciate Patrick's devotion to this project. He's been working for a long time on communicating tests, and I regret that I used it up to the deadline to get out there and see it. And it is a, as Derek said, it's a harsh impact. A, the A route is a harsh impact on those property owners who bought the easement of the railroad property when it came available in the early 90s, and they have moved in and embraced it intensely with their properties. So, so much so, you can't even tell it's a rail bed, as opposed to the other areas that are a typical vision of the rail bed. The same, the other concern I have, and will, and the reason I will not support A, is the extensive stormwater. Addressing the stormwater is in the extensive category, and then Section C, I believe, is described as minimal stormwater to deal with. So without even knowing the cost of that, I get those, those two just descriptive parts of the stormwater, also from what I saw on their property, A is not a good fit for me to vote for. Again, the ponds and the lakes that are visible from the A trail is also a liability that these homeowners have been dealing with for a long time, and then I think it becomes our liability if we're putting a trail to where people can wander off of it and get into their pond or their lake. So I think that's another, what makes A unique, and another reason for us to look strongly at not going that route. C seems to capture more the immuno stuff, for me, not interfering with that business on the intersection. It looks like it goes through that intersection on the same side, so that we're not taking away that business's parking. And then the importance of addressing Oak, what's, what's the Oakmont intersection? So where the C crosses over, that if we can put stop signs and learn how we can make that as safe as possible. One of my new things is mailboxes and people having to cross the street to go to their mailbox. And I believe I'm correct that on this street, people cross it to their mailbox. So crossing it, if we can enhance it for people on that trail, I think it shouldn't be such a problem. I, I'm looking for C to be what we vote on, whenever that happens.
Thanks, Allison. Circle back to Patrick and then Carol, and then I've got a couple of questions for staff and attorney.
So I got a couple of questions as well to Mr. Dawson. Would you and staff have enough time to provide a rough estimate of stormwater costs, removal, condemnation for alternate A, B, and C by our work, our agenda setting?
We've developed preliminary conceptual cost estimates to date, and they should be able to be provided to you to flesh out the final, what the final design in actual, you know, a hard cost estimate on that? No, sir, we wouldn't be able to do that. And the, we can, again, part, part of the, part of the cost for, for land development and right-of-way acquisition, we, we've not filtered that in, or we've not factored that in yet due to, you know, again, as we've spoken with all the property owners, we would do that based upon the, you know, conversation we have, based on the alignment when, when it came time to do that.
But I, just for the edification of the public, I would really like for people in the user groups who are privy to A, to give me a call, email, text or whatnot, and let's go take a look at what's going on back there. But it, you know, as I was describing, the J, the eastern side, well, excuse me, the western side, which... Um, which, which the trail will butt up against Oakmont is uphill. And then the eastern side is downhill and the water flows from the Oakmont subdivision to the east. And if you put, you know, concrete down, um, it, it's just gonna be a stormwater nightmare. You know, it's gonna be enough for people to literally get jet skis and at least for the mile to, you know, entertain and enjoy themselves.
We've got a separate Blue Trail program we're trying to do elsewhere.
So, but I, literally, you know, Oakmont subdivision is uphill and the Carney Lake Road is downhill. And then there's a, part of that trail is there's an indent where all that water, some, the engineering costs. To, to put that bed trail bed is, is gonna be astronomical. And just for to save the taxpayer money, there's a much better option, there's option C. And when it comes to safety, I understand people are concerned about crossing the road. But you know, a three-way stop, um, will help slow traffic. Cause less than a quarter or a mile, there's already another stop sign and then half a mile, there's a, a, a stop light. And what gives me when people complain or have concern about safety. The trail, I mean, the trail bed crosses Athens Road and Winterville Road where the, the dump trucks or what do you want? The, the, the big massive trucks that go in and get, um, the rocks from the quarry, they pass through there. So there's a big section in that Winterville Road and Athens Road where like the traffic is very dense, is very high and the speeds are very high. And you know, just that's also should be people concerned with in, in option C. You know, with stop signs and, uh, maybe an island for crossing and RF lights. You know, I don't think the safety of crossing that road should be much of a, a, a concern. Um, but I look forward to, you know, staff to looking more into it and sending us a report on the projected cost.
Thanks, Patrick. I'm gonna go with Commissioner Thornton and then Myers, circle back to Hool and then again, I've got a couple of questions.
It might be late and it may have been in some of our documents. We're getting a lot, a lot of information and, uh, and that's good. I just can't filter, I just can't filter it all. Can I get or can we get again, and I'm sure somewhere, uh, the list of the folk that were on the U, the user growth, uh, mayor?
Absolutely, yeah. We, we make sure you, you get all of that.
Thank, thank you.
Definitely. Um, Carol and then back to Jesse.
Um, I, I just want to ask, um, Eric and the manager's office to get us perhaps from Transportation and Public Works. Some options for that crossing on C so we can know what they are and what the costs are. Um, that is the main, main, main concern of Athens in Motion and those many, many people who wrote comments about the safety there. Going over to the other side. I am also would like to know again, what projected traffic loads are. Um, I went by there the other day where the, uh, the church is when in a strip mall there. And I was thinking there were never cars, but then there were about like a hundred and fifty cars. And again, with growth and development, um, I just want to see if we have any projections for that area. I don't want to be here in fifteen years going, oh my goodness, why didn't we put it in the other place? Um, uh, and I, there, there are many, many people. I was on the Greenway over the weekend, um, and there are many people on the Greenway who are using that with their families and children. Who do not ride bikes in other places. So we have many people in our community who are, are concerned about the safety and I just want to speak up to them on this. Um, and I would like to know if we are going to have a chance to discuss any of this. That has to do with real estate or legal in an executive session, uh, coming up, um, as well. I'm not even sure if I'm supposed to say that, I, in being a new one, but I would like to address some, some of the real estate and legal, um, issues associated with this.
The, the, the question of property acquisition necessary for a variety of the options has come up and we certainly could follow up with that.
Right, and, and its effect on funding as well and where the, the funds will, will come from. And I think that's important to lay out as well. Because is it all going to come from the Splasst, um, project? Uh, this is a T, this is Splasst, which one is this Derek?
This is T Splasst.
T Splasst, is, is the money for all of these options coming from the T Splasst?
It's my understanding, is that correct Derek?
Yes, sir.
Um, I apologize, I've lost track. This is Commissioner Hool and then Commissioner Denson.
Thank you, Mayor. Um. So have we, this is the section that runs into the Winterville portion, actually. So I'm just curious, we've got the letters from Athens in Motion, Firefly Trail Inc., the Firefly User Group. Have we received any official correspondence from the Winterville government on their preferences in this regard?
I know Commissioner Davenport's spoken with, uh, Mayor, Mayor Farrell.
Okay, um, and have you heard definitively Commissioner Davenport? I guess if you don't mind me just asking you here, if they, if they have an opinion one way or another already?
The mayor strongly supports C.
Okay, um, that's helpful to, to know. And then I, I guess I'm back to the stormwater thing. Um, I guess I'm curious, in the, um, evaluation of the trail and the drainage and the different alternatives. Have we had a stormwater expert out there? I know we've had obviously like engineering crews who are aware of that generally, but I'm just curious if we've sent out. You know, one of our people who specialize in that or if, or if the contractor that we worked with had someone who specialized in that specifically. Cause I guess in my mind, like, I don't want to move forward with C unless it's definitely safe. And I don't want to move forward with A unless we definitely know it's not going to be flooding all the time. So I feel those to me are like the two big questions to answer.
All right, thanks Jesse. Moving on to Tim.
I'm sorry, I guess that was just a question. Has anybody been out there yet already? Cause I, I don't really feel like that's an unanswered question if we've already had someone who's an expert in that out there. But if not, I'd be curious if we could.
Uh, I'm not sure how you're defining expert, but our engineering team that we've hired have been looking at it and, and developed, uh. You know, in order of magnitude cost and that's in the, in the estimate. Um, and again, we, we know additional work would have to be done to, to formalize and finalize the, the design on that. Um, I, I don't know of anybody from our, uh, Streets and Drainage Division, um, or Traffic Engineering or Stormwater Development Group has been out there. Um, I don't believe so. And, uh, we have spoken to Traffic Engineering and if C was, was developed, then of course we would work with them on, on developing that final. You know, we, we have some ideas on what it may be, but several of these ideas, for example, just it, to. It, it's inappropriate to just throw a stop, I use the term throw to place a stop sign somewhere that a warrant is not, um, addressed. Um, certain traffic engineering protocols. So we'd want to make sure that we go through that, that process and get the appropriate amount of protection there that, that would be, be warranted.
Okay, thanks y'all.
Thanks for that. Go ahead, Tim.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, and I, I think this, uh, first off, the, the public response, uh. Thing that was set up here is pretty amazing and I definitely appreciate staff for setting that up. I was reading through, uh, the comments this weekend. And one popped up, which I know is something we've talked about, but hasn't really come up today, which was, uh. You know, one of the people writes, you know, Splasst funds cannot be used for the alternate routes. There are multiple Georgia Supreme Court decisions overturning projects that were different from proposals presented to voters. And so on that question, which I know we've, we've talked about a little bit. About the original language of this says that it needs to be on the rail bed and by going to B or C potentially violates that language. I think my question would be to Judd, which is, I guess this is my understanding process in this. If we were to move to B and C and tried to move forward on that. And, and we, and we, and we were sued on that and we lost that case. Um, would that force us to build A anyways?
And, and Judd, maybe as you answer that, you know, if you could kind of more broadly sort of give your view of, you know, whether in your kind of estimation, B and C. You know, are legally viable options generally?
Right, I think that's a good question, Commissioner Denson. Uh, the Georgia Supreme Court has ruled that the governing authority is obliged to use proceeds from a Splasst. For projects that are approved in the Splasst referendum that's voted on by the voters. Uh, the Dickey v. Story case is probably the seminal case. It's a nineteen ninety-two case in the Supreme Court. And it held the governing authority is bound by the Splasst budget and account reports. To complete all projects listed there unless circumstances arise which dictate that projects, which initially seemed feasible are no longer so. In this regard, the court held the governing authority has discretion to make adjustments in the plans for these projects. But it may not abandon these projects altogether. Another court, uh, pertinent case, the, uh, Rothschild versus Consolidated Government, Columbus Consolidated Government case in two thousand eight cases says that. It, it too recognized that counties retain some discretion to alter Splasst projects. Uh, but no, this is the critical inquiry, is no such alterations made contrary to the terms of the refer, referendum. When we look at our referendum language, uh, uh, in, in the project description for project six, Firefly Trail Project. It, it reads, the pertinent part reads, what the Firefly, Firefly Trail Project will provide for the land acquisition, design. And construction of additional length to the Firefly Trail from the end of the work being done in the Splasst two thousand eleven program. Generally at the intersection of the old Winterville Road and Little Oak Street. Through the project's eastern terminus at the Kanaline in Winterville. So then we have to look at, see what other project documents that were that might have been represented to the public.
The public.
As indicative of what this trail was gonna. I'm getting some, some reverb. I want to constitute, it's better, I think now, okay, thank you. Uh, and so I, I, uh, will say that this description itself does not, you know, uh, specifically pin the location down. Now there was a project, uh, there, there was a project, uh, what we call the. A project request form that was presented, uh, as part of this process of coming with the projects. Each one has one and it did have a copy of a map that, that indicates, uh, basically what I, what I perceive to be, uh, the option A location. But it was never specifically approved or adopted by the commission. And I've confirmed that through looking at the minutes myself and, and talking to Mr., and, and to talking to Mr. Doster. And after I talked to him, I looked at it, spent time at the clerk's office looking at it. And so then, you know, what have we publicly recognized as the Firefly Trail? If you look at our website, ACC Gov's website, we actually have information on there that has a frequently asked questions about the project. And the first one is, what is the Firefly Trail? It is a planned partially constructed multipurpose path for pedestrian bicycle and other anomalous uses. That will stretch thirty-nine miles from Athens to Union Point, Georgia. It will be built on or near the historic corridor of the Athens branch of the Georgia Railroad. One mile is open and nine more in progress. So when I look at that on or near language, I see that as given some discretion, uh, for the location, uh, to be moved. I did reach out to, uh, the planning, uh, to, to Kent Kilpatrick, who's Director of Leisure Services. And this is the sixth, their department will be over this. And I asked him specifically, you know, when did this language come to be? Uh, and he, and his response was, and I told him why we were looking at this because there was talk about this alternative location. And he said from staff perspective, the term on or near the original railroad bed has been used since the project was first promoted. Uh, I can say I did some research, uh, today and looking at old newspaper articles. And I found a newspaper article, uh, from the Athens Banner-Herald, uh, online Athens. Uh, where there was public hearings being held by the commission and they're actually, there was talk about, there was, uh, concern from the community. That the commission was considering cutting funds from this project. And, uh, actually Mayor Gertz, uh, they, they actually went back and looked and determined the Splasst was gonna be able to generate more funds. So they're able to put back those monies that, that were being cut. And Mayor Gertz joked that he wished he could find a money tree like that, put it in his, his yard. You remember that Mayor Gertz?
I think I do.
But anyway, the funny thing about that article was it too, uh, and this was prior to the rever, referendum has that on or near language in there. Now I say all that to say, those are, are certainly indic, indicators, uh, that, that could be relied upon. Uh, that there is some flexibility there. Now, I, I don't know what else other documentation may have been generated by this government. Uh, I'm not aware of any, but I mean, I can't, you know, that might have, you know, might give credence to the article that, that, to the argument that there's no flexibility. Uh, uh, to move it. I can say that there had, uh, when I went out and visited the site myself, I actually only visited there. I visited, uh, Derek rode me along the whole path. There's been like three other places where we've slightly varied the route from off the bed. Nothing substantial, as, as substantial as this, but it has been varied, varied in the past some. Now, uh, I do think, uh, you know, I'm not an engineer, but I can't speak to the issue of the, uh. Uh, I did to note, I think the two things I primarily noted out there when I went was it does not appear. That with respect to, uh, that portion that we're discussing, that the, that the path is contin, continuous and uninterrupted there. I mean, I myself, when I was out there, had a hard time, I could not locate where the path was, uh, uh, behind the three houses. Uh, you know, the, the, the one with the pool and I think there's a pool that's been filled in the project. You know, and the, uh, house that has, that has the, the shop or, or the pole barn there, it's going to have to be removed because it was built on top of that. And, and the reason you have the difficulty is because like Commissioner Link said last meeting, they actually did fill in the rail bed there, you know? And it's quite significant fill. So I say all that to say, uh, 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 I, I think that, you know, I, I think there are certainly some legitimate, uh, arguments that we can make. That there is some flexibility there, it was recognized, represented to the public, you know, uh. And I, and that resulted in a lot, a lot of different additional research. Uh, you know, the project request form did have that map attached. Uh, I also looked and I also looked, you know, in the past for the two thousand and five Splasst and the two thousand and eleven Splasst. You know, this rail to trail language is actually used in the project descriptions. And it's changed two thousand, in two thousand and eighteen T Splasst, you're using a Firefly Trail. So I say all that to say, that's a lot, you know, it, it might be a question of degrees and argument, Commissioner. Uh, if, if someone decided to challenge that, we, we, there certainly is an argument, I think you made in court. That we believe we have some discretion, uh, number one, based upon the factors that have been discussed tonight. And number two, there's argument that the referendum itself did not specifically say it has to be on the rail bed. Uh, you know, but whatever that, that someone who opposed that position may come forward, I'd have to consider. But what I've been able to find and what I might, my, my, my discussions with staff and particularly Director Kilpatrick, you know, uh. Seen to indicate, you know, at least from his perspective, and it's just one staff member, that that term on or near, which is on our website. Uh, in describing the project, uh, has been used since the project was first promoted. So that's the information I can give you, uh, based upon a lot of research and a lot of, uh, consideration. Uh, Mr. Mayor, does that answer any, what, what kind of the overall look you want me to give from this?
It, it certainly does for me. I want to make sure that kind of captures the, the questions that Tim had. I think Melissa had a follow-up on the kind of legal question. Tim is good, go ahead Melissa.
I mean, my, my concern primarily, um, you know, i- is safety and cost as well. And, you know, doing some more digging in these maps and recognizing. You know, if the, the road crossings that are necessary with any of these options, quite frankly. Um, option A, even if it sticks flat onto the rail bed, it's, um, requires significant crossings at that five points intersection with Athens Road. Um, that's a pretty sketchy crossing there. And I presume that it would have to go in some of these front yards here. But if it were to be on the other side of Morris Grove Road, it, it, the only crossing would be on the, uh, east side of Athens Road. Where there's significant room. So I'm just kind of weighing the pros and cons of all of these and also. I, I'm also looking at, at other, other opportunities, um, you know, cause we, to, to abandon. The rail, rail bed early on before hitting Oakmont is to abandon a really beautiful stretch of trail. Um, but I, I, I wonder if we could get a, a little further in before making our way over. Um, and, and maybe getting that crossing on the, I guess it's the east side of Oakmont Circle. And, and, and putting in a, a proper stoplight at that, that four-way intersection where Oakmont Circle actually crosses over Morris Grove Road. Then becomes Oakmont Court. So I, I'm just, you know, wondering how we can get a best possible case scenario out of this.
Thanks, Melissa. One of the things, Derek, that I'm interested in seeing like everybody who's spoken tonight is. You know, how can we effectively calm traffic? You know, one of the things that, uh, certainly you as, uh, as a Splasst, uh, project manager and, uh, staff in Transportation, Public Works have. You know, ably demonstrated again and again, is that if you want traffic to be calmed, you know, you have to create the physical contours that do that. Um, you know, ju- just putting up signage, you know, isn't, i- isn't going to be the absolute. And in fact, it may be the least effective. in fact, it may be the least effective thing. But if, you know, we can somehow constrict traffic, you know, we've got some models that we've rolled out on Cedar Shoals Drive and Prince Avenue and other places that, you know, create physical infrastructure that cause people to slow down, that's going to benefit Morris Grove all around, because even outside of discussion of the Firefly Project in proximity here, I've gotten complaints from Wintervilleans and those nearby about speeds. So I'm interested in staff demonstrating to us how traffic could be calmed across the board on Morris Grove, and then even more so with the prospect of crossing. So any, any further thoughts? Obviously, we're going to see this on the upcoming agenda. Go ahead, Jesse.
Yeah, I was digging through my notes from our tour, and then I just realized there's one other minor thing I wanted to bring up. It's kind of deep in the weeds on the public input tool, but I imagine residents might raise it, so I'd like to just address it now and kind of nip it in the bud. But they had raised the concern about the public input tool automatically generating a second option when people selected one. And I guess I just wanted to get clarity on whether that was the case and whether, because it doesn't, I mean, it seems like all the different combinations were selected by at least some people, so I guess I'm just trying to make sense of what might have gone on there, or if that was just a misunderstanding by, like a user error, so to speak.
It's my understanding, when you selected your first, your primary tool, the next one automatically populated, but you had the opportunity to move it and draft, you had the choice to override it. I think that was a backend, I think it was a product of the survey tool. It was not intentional by any means.
Okay.
But you had the option to make those adjustments.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying that.
All right, everyone, and again, we'll see this in the coming cycle. All right, thank you for that, Derek. I think next we're moving on to a cluster of downtown-related topics.
Yes, thank you. And we do have seven items left. I know that we got through two of our toughest ones, I think, as far as controversy, and I appreciate all the great questions. We do, the first three tonight are somewhat related. They're all related to the Clayton Street Project, the downtown infrastructure improvements, if you will, the remake of Clayton Street, which has started in earnest this week, if you didn't know, at the corner of Lumpkin and Clayton. We have on hand, we're going to talk about the proposed art, downtown loading zones that were necessitated by removing the third lane in Clayton, and that is not just Clayton, but around downtown, and then eco-stations, working with the trash issue on Clayton and how we're going to deal with that in the absence of alleys. So the first three items here, the next three items we're going to talk about are all somewhat interrelated, and we're going to start with the approved artist for the Clayton Street Improvements Project Art, Eric Lashinsky, and Andrew Salinas, the Cultural Affairs Commission Chair, is with us tonight, and I'll turn it over to Andrew to introduce Mr. Lashinsky. And thank you both for being patient and waiting with us.
Good to be with you.
Sure. Eric, want to go ahead and share?
Yeah, let me do that.
Everybody, thank you for the opportunity to introduce. It's back to about three years ago. So this is a mayor and commission-approved concept, although its approval might predate some of your terms.
Can everyone see this?
Yeah. So again, this is a really unique art project for us. If it feels and looks a little different, that's because it is. Really, and truly, this is different than every project we've done in our 10 years in the sense that it's integrated into the project itself, so the Clayton Street, streetscaping. So this project was launched about two and a half years ago. We received 33 proposals. The top three prevented, presented their concept to the mayor and commission, and Eric was selected to lead this project, and he's been really patient as this project has evolved through the years. Most recently, in early December, Eric came to visit Athens and got some kind of on-the-ground information to make this project really successful. So again, unlike every project that we've done in our 10 years, we call most of our projects plop art in the sense that they're plopped, you know, they're sited at the aftermath of a project. This one is truly different, and I'll let Eric take it from here.
Thank you, Andrew. Yeah, that's an important distinction. I'm glad you brought that up. This is, this is really intended to be interwoven with the streetscape project as a whole. Some of you on the commission may remember these drawings from 2018. This is from my original submission, application, proposal, that got me selected for the project. And I'm really thrilled to be part of it, I should say. I mean, it has been a long time coming, but it's a terrific opportunity, and, you know, I think just the Clayton Street Project in general is obviously going to have a huge impact on the city. So flash forward to December of this past year, just a couple of months ago, and I visited Athens for the first time during the holiday season unlike any other. I just saw amazing variety of things already happening on Clayton Street. I'm just going to flip through several slides, kind of showing some of my observations that had been part of my process. And, you know, that's what I'm, tonight, in this short presentation, I'm trying to let you in on my process and how this project has evolved, and I'll get to the current designs in a moment. So really interested in all of these sort of ephemeral gestures that are already happening on Clayton Street that kind of show how this street has become kind of a community street and the way it is adopted and invested by business owners and the community. You know, a lot of that stuff is staying, not going away. You have kind of monuments that will be reinstalled. You have just nature, beautiful moments like this, the Skingo Tree that will, in some cases, go away but then come back as trees are replaced. Details like this on storefronts that are kind of infrastructure done artfully, these kind of moments, things that you might miss if you don't look a little closer. That's me appreciating the sort of seasonal monuments. Vestiges of the past and the present that matter enough that businesses, property owners have kept these, you know, and that's really a testament to, you know, what matters to people and the kind of history of this street. These railings are something that are going to, you know, I think continue to be a feature of the street even in its new form and their, the kind of infrastructure that's important to reckon with and kind of typically, you know, fixture of the various restaurants. But, you know, we're also living in a time of COVID where the street is being sort of appropriated in unique ways and being utilized as kind of a survival mechanism for businesses. That's all part of the streetscape that, you know, I'm kind of inheriting, I would say, as part of this project. The future is sort of uncertain, but, you know, we're seeing cues for what might happen in how people are using the space, such as College Square, which may become a permanent public pedestrian space. You know, I was able to see, even though it wasn't a typical game day weekend, I was able to see on a very cold winter night just how actively used the street is. And it's an important acknowledgement in how I prepare for this project and prepare for the use it's going to get. You know, and I think it's also important to acknowledge that the businesses do a variety of things to adapt, you know, to the street and call attention to themselves, and that's all part of the, that's part of the environment that I'm working in. I'm trying to pick up the identity of the street in, you know, noticing things like this, you know, where social distancing is measured through genuinely local terms. And then I looked at public art happening elsewhere in the city that helps me understand the kind of collection of the city and how this project is fitting into that. Really appreciate the bus stop project and pieces like this, you know. It was an early morning day, but I think something like this, you can see the use that it might have on a nicer day, and this was part of a private site, I believe, in southern part of the town. I saw Linden House Museum and Gallery, and, you know, I just, I'm drawn to things like this that are sort of somewhere in between art and something else that I'm not really sure what to make of it, but the Murmur Trestle is something, it's kind of like in the same, in the same vein, it's infrastructure that, and architecture, and it's a monument, and, you know, so all of these things are factoring in my process, and, you know, interestingly, I'm kind of brought back to some of the most ephemeral moments here, performers happening on the street on a Sunday morning. I don't want the public art to prevent this from happening, you know, this is going to continue to be important to the streetscape in some ways. I'm trying to even facilitate this or make it so that these corners and bump outs become even more a place for that. It's impossible to not think about music and, you know, the sort of cultural importance of that to Athens and the street, and so I'm drawn to kind of ways of representing that. And then I'm also drawn to sort of how the downtown and Clayton Street are kind of a counterpoint to the Greenway and the river, and, you know, how this street could also be seen and the public artwork can be seen as an extension of that river. And finally, this kind of gnarled, organic form of the tree that, you know, as the streetscape is rebuilt, some of this stuff isn't going to be there, and so I'm thinking about ways of retaining that organic quality in the artwork. And so, you know, as I'm working on the forms, I found myself moving away from kind of rigid angles and looking at forms that were more fluid and script-like, and this is a variety of forms, this is not what the work would be, but they're kind of, I'm just showing a variety of different forms that I'm working with. I modeled the streetscape as it will be built in the computer to understand exactly what this is going to look like and the difference it will have versus what's there today. I took continuous elevation photos of both sides of the street, put those together to kind of understand that building elevation and that sort of cornice line that is also very rigid and beautiful, but very architectural, obviously, and that's kind of also a counterpoint to this. You know, the design is something that I don't have much say over in terms of the streetscape. It's something that's approved, it's going to be a great streetscape, but it also is crowded with a lot of stuff. You know, there's benches and trash cans and light posts and signal arms and some bike racks and trees and tree grates, and so somewhere in there, this public art is going to fit. And so I started thinking about these spaces, you know, that offer different types of dimensions for the public artwork. So the green areas are really where there's the most space, and the yellow areas are where there's still some space, but it's a little tight, and then the orange areas are where, you know, you really have not a lot of space to work with without impeding something or somebody. And so there are rules that I really had to keep on my radar to think about as I develop this piece further, and a lot of it is just frankly not getting in the way of a lot of the pedestrian traffic. And I was just thinking about what can I do that will actually complement this streetscape, make it better, and really kind of add to the experience. I came up with these three sort of moments that I thought would be a way of creating a hierarchy, you know, because my interest is in populating the street with the artwork, not, as Andrew said, not plopping it down somewhere, but really kind of sewing it into the streetscape in ways that make sense. And given the different constraints and the spaces I have to work with, I thought that these three moments could allow me to create modules of different size and different experience. And so that's kind of how this starts to play out in these different modules that are of different size and respond to the streetscape in different ways. They're very interactive, all of them, but in different ways. So this idea of announcement, this is a piece that would be at the, I'm going to show some visualizations of each of these as well, and then that'll be the presentation, but this one is the largest of these modules. It would be at those larger corner locations where there's more space. It looks straight, but it actually, as you can see in the plan, it's kind of a curved form. You know, it's something that you could stretch a banner within to announce an event or anything else, really, kids could play with, interact. It could provide a seat that may not be comfortable to sit on for a long period of time, but just for a short period would work. So this kind of gives you a sense of how that could coexist with everything else at this bump out. These moments of discovery are artworks that interact with existing street furnishings in ways that people will encounter, maybe change the way they use the furnishings. So one is interacting with the bench, and, you know, I'm playing with where it locates itself on the bench. I don't want to take away from places where somebody could sit, but, you know, it could be the armrest for somebody is kind of how I think about it. And then at the tree area, something that kind of reminds people that this tree needs some space too, and could also provide a seat for somebody informally. And that's kind of how one of those pieces would look at the bench or at a tree. And then finally, these moments of surprise where, you know, I think they're genuinely intended to not be something you would expect at all. So one is kind of taking over the railing around one of the planted beds, and the other is actually inlaid into the concrete, is kind of a flat, flat bar form. So this is the way that one would look along the planter, and then this one that's kind of inlaid into the concrete. And then I'm looking at tentative locations. I hope to do this many, it may be a few less, but essentially, two of the large ones at the corners where, you know, I think they'll have the most impact, and then three of each of the others, trying to space them across the three blocks, essentially three blocks, to really kind of allow for this, essentially, it's kind of a thread that I'm trying to weave through here. Hopefully that comes across, but that was one of the original ideas, was to have an artwork that could carry somebody from one end of the site to another and stop and start, and that's what I'm trying to do. Two-inch steel pipe is the primary material here. It's got a 3/8 inch wall, and it would be anchored into the concrete with kind of a flange-type detail. The steel plate is what the... The steel plate is, is what those pieces inlaid in the concrete would be fabricated from. And then it would all be powder coated, which is kind of the industry standard for durability. And it's really intended for everything from furniture to industrial equipment to really last. And there's quite a variety of colors that I'm really trying to work with a color that has some connection to the water, but also and fluidity and, and also works with red and black and gray. So in terms of next steps, you know, we have presentation and some kind of question prompts on the ACAC website. I'm interested in any feedback through February. I'm going to continue working though on a package that's sort of per my contract. It's a preliminary phase one package that I need to submit by the end of March. I'll be continuing to develop those drawings. Following approval and, and turn them into construction drawings by June. And, and really then trying to time the installation with the streetscape construction work coordinated towards the late fall is really likely when that's going to happen. So thanks for the chance to give you an update on this. Happy to discuss.
Thanks, Eric, and thanks, Andrew. Questions for either, either the gentleman with us? Allison?
Yes, thank you. Hi, gentlemen. I'm a visual artist, a medical illustrator. So I was here when it was just that, that line going down the street and I was trying to understand how that was going to turn it. Did you guys just make me full screen?
Yeah, sorry, I just.
Stop.
You can go back to this.
Thank you. That was a little scary. And so I was trying to visualize how it was going to integrate. I am very impressed with how you have done that integration and gone with the, the different levels literally. And then picking up on the inlaid history and then also integrating some in-ground discovery or surprise, I guess, one. So I think it's really impressive. I have a couple of questions. Do we have to worry about the artwork becoming a bike rack?
I, I would be thrilled if that is how it was used. I mean, there's the, that was one, that was one of the original points of inspiration. I think when I was, when I interviewed for the project, I, you know, I talked about a 2,000 foot long bike rack that stops and starts, which is kind of a crazy idea. But no, I mean, the powder coating is, is really durable finish on this metal and you know, there, there might be some things I'll do to limit how, I don't know, skateboarders will probably use it as well. There's, there's kind of simple things that can be done to kind of protect it from immediate abuse. But over time, I, I think that's, that's the intent is that people, it's, these aren't, they, these are by design sculptures that are sort of functional in, in a non-prescriptive way, you know? That's kind of the unspoken intent, I guess.
Gotcha. Okay, good. Well, I, I think it speaks to that. I also want to thank you for picking colors that complement red and black and, but yet are not that. So I also appreciate that and grass being the, I just really appreciate your on the groundwork here and what you've picked up on. I have another question about since we're still, the palette has yet been set. Is there a substance that could be used on the sidewalk that allows the part that you're putting in the ground to be seen with just a little bit of variance in depth? Because I would like to be able to learn more about that if the sections where the surprise is or where you go in and back up can be seen. And, and if that's something you want to get back with us about, if it exists, I, I would welcome us being able to figure out how, if that, if that could work. With just, you know, you know what I'm talking about?
I don't, because I'm not, I'm not following you like below, below grade.
Yeah, so if they were, instead of it going disappearing in concrete or you only can use the, the very top of the concrete for the surprise ones that are in ground, if there was a see-through substance.
Thinking like an epoxy or something like that, Allison?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Gertz. Anyway, if, if that's not something you've experienced yet to know that it exists and you just wish we would put it in the ground for you. It might, it might just be too imaginary for me right now, but I think that would enhance especially some of your, your ones that are going up and then down. Anyway, it's just a thought. But anyway, I love, I love what you're doing and, and how you're coming forward with it. Thank you.
Thanks very much for those comments.
Go ahead, Melissa.
Yeah, um, thank you, Eric. It's really nice to hear you, you know, kind of explain your, your work. We've just seen it in this kind of conceptual, you know, 2D basic presentation, but your, your concept of the river and connectivity, I, I think that's really brilliant and really speaks to the spirit of downtown. And, you know, it's, it's a really, really playful piece and it was certainly challenging. I mean, coming up with an art installation to cover an entire corridor, you know, that you let, yet is still unifying. It's that, I really commend you for rising up to that challenge. You know, I, and I like the interactive element of it. I think that that is extremely important. You know, it is playful and it invites that interaction and, and I feel like it, it'll really invite interaction from children, which is something that we don't have a lot of downtown. You know, it's, it's a, it's a part of town that's really overwhelmed by a student demographic and, and, you know, demographic that has a pretty strong appetite for destruction. And so I am concerned about some of these elements that are sticking straight up and, you know, how, how we're going to keep them straight. I mean, I, I got a report a couple of days ago of someone literally ripping a, a parking meter out of the concrete downtown. So I, I just hope that, you know, the engineers that, that we're working with are really reiterating the, the stability, the durability of these things. But it is really playful and inviting and, you know, I, I think it'll, I think it'll send a message. I, I hope that it'll send a message to downtown that, you know, we want, it's as an inviting space and a playful space for, for more than just drunken hordes.
Yeah, yeah. And that's kind of where I, I'm just going to read through that. On my visit, I, I was able to meet with a number of people and, and, yeah, that, that was expressed to me this that a lot of families honestly feel encouraged to come down and that there's a desire to bring more people into downtown. So it was definitely on my mind and I have a six-year-old daughter as well. I've seen her use artworks in ways I couldn't have envisioned, so. But, you know, I'm going to be building prototypes of these, so I'll, I'll be testing their durability out. That's part of my process as well. I hear you on that. I, I know they're going to get a lot of abuse, so.
We, we, we hope we've got maybe some Mr. Fantastic, but not so much Incredible Hulk action on the, on art. Any, any other thoughts or questions for Eric or Andrew or staff?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead, Russell.
This, this looks great. I, you know, Eric, I, I like how you've integrated the design with some streetscape features that are going to be installed. I think it's really important that it, that we seize that opportunity to cooperate and collaborate. I, I, I think it's, I think it's a great direction to move in with, with our art projects in general to kind of move beyond the completing the project and then installing art on top of it. If we can sort of use this process as a model moving forward to be a little more collaborative all throughout the design phase, incorporating art, I think we'll get a better product. So thanks for incorporating that feedback and thanks to Derek and the folks at the Splos office for, for making that happen too. I think it looks solid. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other input?
Mr. Mayor, can I jump in for a second?
Yeah, please do.
So I'll, I'll avoid gushing too much about why I think this is awesome, but thanks for sharing on it. I think this is fantastic. I did have one thought and one question. My question is, if you're aware of any effects some of these might have on ADA accessibility, you know, wheelchair access on the sidewalk and especially where this is showing up at crossings where there's ramps and just making sure that the design is factoring for that.
Absolutely, yeah. No, it's on my mind. I, I'm, I'm looking and some of the, some of the drawings are all deceptive, but, you know, like, for example, at the corner, what I'm looking at is, yeah, this one in particular, I think it's pretty deceptive the way I'm showing it. But I am making sure that the travel lanes for somebody in a wheelchair will be preserved. And it's, yeah, it's, I, I, I'm not trying to shoehorn things in too much here, but some of these perspectives can be a little deceptive. But, you know, it's on my mind. I can assure you of that.
Okay, awesome. Thanks. Yeah, I just wanted to, to make sure that was the case and I'm not surprised that it is. But yeah, I, I think this is really great. The other thing I just wanted to share, and I don't know how directly relevant it is to this project, but in case new benches are going to go in, traditional benches as part of this, I would strongly urge that we do not use the quote unquote hostile infrastructure, the benches that are sort of seen as like an anti homelessness measure with the, the railings in the middle. It's something that was fairly recently changed downtown, kind of comprehensively, much to my chagrin. And I, I'd like to see us move in the opposite direction of that. So insofar as my colleagues agree, that's something I'd like to ask for. And yeah, thank you so much for this. This is great.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point. I'm not, I'm not really involved on selecting the site furnishings, but I'm, I'm staying plugged into that process. So that's definitely more on the, on the engineering and contractor side. And that's going to kind of guide, you know, some of what I do. But yeah, I, I agree with you on that.
Quick question here, comment? Eric, this is Commissioner Myers over here. Really like the playfulness here. Love public art in the, in the downtown area, any downtown areas. I lean to look at your, the, the place for public feedback online because I saw on your PowerPoint, you said you still wanted it, so I was going to share it. But I wanted to say that the, it says the comments are closed and you can't put any more comments in there. Is that what, is that, is that something that you want to be that way?
Uh, no, I think we need to fix that.
Okay.
Probably a good, good pickup there.
Okay, good, good. Cause I, I like sharing fun, positive things like this. Thank you.
Thanks for letting us know.
Thanks. Any other input on this piece?
Mayor, I had a, a quick question.
Yeah.
Thanks for doing this, Eric. Could you go back to the, to the map, the, the street map where the, the locations?
Sure.
Thanks. So, and I know, I really appreciate y'all doing the town hall, the public town hall, taking input. I, I got to watch that and it was a little more thorough presentation. Really appreciated. And I know Christian Edwards, I think, actually brought this up, which is, while it's not inevitable, I guess, at this point, but very likely that College Avenue is going to be closed off, making College Square there. And I, I guess I was wondering if there was a way, I really want that space to be, to truly feel like a continuation of the pedestrian experience downtown. And so I just wondered if there was a way even like this, this somewhat to be able to push that off so that part of this public art, part of the larger, larger pieces that I think you have kind of set for that area, it somehow moved into that space, kind of actually creating a more welcoming flow from the sidewalk into that square rather than having it kind of structured off on the curb, kind of like it is now. I know you're probably already a lot of ways into, into building out your concepts here. But I mean, whenever I, whenever I was watching that presentation and, and Christian Edwards brought it up, I had this like epic idea of like, oh, it'd be amazing if there was this like this giant like arch that went over, you know, connected to the two sides of the streets that like cars could still go in there when we need them to, uh, which would be rarely. But just something like that that really tied that in to make that a big spot. Cause that's going to be the central location, I think, for pedestrian experiences downtown. I'd love to see that somehow get tied into this. Yeah. And the, and the other thing is I love bringing up the, the skateboards and having this be kind of like a living thing that people interact, choose how they're going to interact. I know Central Services probably isn't excited about hearing about skateboarders on these things, but I skated whenever in my youth. So I think this would be, you can do some awesome stuff on that.
Well, I mean, I, I'm, I'm definitely open to, you know, I have not fully cited these things yet. So, I mean, I'm open to having one on that, you know, corner by College Avenue kind of lead into college a little bit. I mean, it's kind of up to, I hate to say, but you know, it's kind of up to the engineering team, you know, how, how far is too far? You know, it's, the, the site technically is Clayton. I think what I said at the public presentation was, community presentation was that, you know, that I think one of the distinctions of this project is they can, it can easily expand. And when, if, and when College Avenue becomes, College Square becomes, you know, that pedestrian plaza and that's going to be its own project in a way, you know, I assume it would be resurfaced and certain things will be done to make it more of a pedestrian space. These, this type of artwork could, could certainly populate that, you know, to kind of make the connection better. But I, I'll talk with the, the project managers for Clayton's, for the Clayton Street project and see just kind of where we need, you know, where their scope is ending essentially. And, you know, that's probably where, that's probably the, the extent to which I can push this, so.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Yeah.
Any other thoughts before we move on to the next piece of downtown? All right, Eric, I can't thank you enough. I'm really looking forward to this coming to life. Thanks, Andrew. I think next up is the, is the loading zones.
Thank you all. Good to be with you.
Thank you, Eric.
Thanks, Eric.
So Mayor, if I might, the downtown loading zones, I want to thank Commissioners Hamby and Edwards for bringing continual issues and conflicts downtown. It really necessitated some, some further review, not just of Clayton, but the entire downtown of the impacts of removing the center lane of Clayton. And so Steve Decker is here tonight to talk about some of those changes that, that have been made and approved by the police chief that need to be made permanent. And then he's going to lead into some additional ordinance cleanup that we won't try and do all at one time, but will be coming to you in a, a upcoming meeting soon. So with that, Steve, I'll turn it over to you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Williams. Appreciate it. Let me try to share. Let's see how this thing works. Uh, it's working.
Got it?
Okay. Downtown loading zones. As the managers stated, this, this started, uh, get this thing to work right. It has a purpose. It started because of the, the downtown Clayton streetscape that are being removed. And we had people parking and loading and unloading in the through lanes. And so that's where we started, but I put a team together of traffic engineer, the AD, ADDA Police Department and Splos, and we walked this. And we, we, we started with Clayton, but then while we were there, we decided to look at the whole downtown. And as you know, Washington Street has a center lane that had basically unmarked zones and delivery vehicles are parking everywhere. So I wanted to look at that. But we had a request for a loading zone on Thomas, so we, we looked at that as well. But we had a request for a loading zone on Thomas, so we, we looked at that as well. Uh, and like the manager said, I went to the police chief using, uh, the code section three, three and four nine for temporary placement of traffic control. I got his approval twice, first in October, to go ahead and put these down so they could be enforceable, and I had an extension because we, beyond our 90 days, took us a little longer. But what we did, we took what we put on, on the ground, and we put it in our Transportation Public Works GIS map. We did that for future tracking and maintenance and also be able to, at some point, to make a map that we could share with ADDA and the downtown businesses, so they could share that with our delivery folks. A little bit of history, uh, the loading zones established, uh, in nineteen hundreds, uh, and it was updated in, uh, last time in, in 2010. Uh, there's a primary loading zone, the three, three, fifteen. It basically specifies, uh, Clayton Street, Washington Street, the center lane loading zones, but it also has in there disabled parking and loading zones, and most of these loading zones are typically not ADA compliant, which was a concern. There's two other, uh, loading zone, uh, codes. One, basically, very specific, that, uh, is kind of, uh, a duplicate what's in, in the three, three, fifteen for loading zones, again, not typically ADA compliant. And then another one that says for double parking deliveries into downtown on Clayton and Washington in the crosswalks, which is very unsafe. And I'll talk about those later. So first, first thing we did was address what was needed on, on Clayton Street, and I'm not gonna go through these yet, I'll show you the map in a second. But we started on Lumpkin Street on the east side, and, and that is basically was a project required by Target, but working with Splos, we got that done. College Avenue had a couple we modified. Jackson Street, we had a couple modified. Wall Street we modified, and I'll explain that in a minute. And then I went to Washington Street and we marked the crossings on the blocks that had the center lane, not crossing, not crossing, excuse me, the loading zones, to get a, a safe place for these people to park and still address the businesses. And then we had a request on Thomas Street, on Doherty, uh, excuse me, South of Doherty, for a loading zone for some businesses there, and we did that at the same time. This is the map that we've created and the, what you see in red are the existing loading zones that are there, and what's in purple is what we just worked on. And we started, we started on, on Lumpkin, and this is the whole east side of Lumpkin from Broad to Clayton, that was required to be done by, uh, Target, but we, we put it in now and paint so we could do it. Uh, and going up on Clayton, uh, this, this red one that's here now will be gone because that'll be, the streetscape will take care of that. So the next street we went to was College, and on the north side of Clayton, on the west side of College is a, was an area where police department used to park. We convinced and, and working with PD, they, we moved their space and we turned that into a loading zone, which is really a good location. And on the opposite side of the street, on the, on the east side of the street, we extended the one that was there, cause there's also another parking place there for PD. And we've taken care of that with PD, so they're, they're happy with that. Uh, and then ironically, I do wanna add that I have driven that and these are being used daily. We went to Jackson Street, and if you can see on the north side of Clayton, we extended the existing, uh, a couple of parking spaces to get additional, and we went on the south side down close to Broad and extended that. Now, these don't all help Clayton, but they also help Broad Street, which is also in dire need. Then we went to Wall Street, which had a loading zone just south of Clayton at that grade, which was never used because it was too difficult for delivery trucks to use it. So we moved it to the south side and extended it, which ironically, I saw a delivery go up the hill and, and, and because they could get out of the truck without losing it, but then they pushed it up the hill and went to Clayton. So that's being used as well. But like I said, we went to Washington Street and you'll notice from Thomas to Jackson that the two we put in, these are located in an area that address all the businesses safely and given them spacing for access and safe access, and they're more visible. And then from Jackson to Clayton, we did the same thing. We only could put one because it got too close to this intersection, there was too much movement and it wasn't safe, but I, I did look at this and it, it is working very well. The next block from, from, um, College to Lumpkin, there's an existing one, there is no center lane, those existing one, it is used, uh, and is adequate, we could not put another one there. Then we went from Lumpkin to Hall and put these in, the same thing we've done at the other blocks, safe locations in an area where it would help the businesses not have to travel long distances to be used. Then we went from, uh, Hall to Pulaski and we put two in, same thing, we put them in where they would be used safely. One, we have this gore area that where the left turn ends, and we have a right and, and a left turn, and that was not being used. I did see a vehicle use it, so we thought this would be an ideal place to put a, a loading zone, and it is being used. And if you go over to Thomas to South of Doherty, you may be able to see where we put that hundred foot one in on, on Thomas to help the businesses on, 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 on Thomas. And I have driven these several times and I, I, since I work downtown, I try to make, in the morning I go that way to see if they're being used. I'm not a hundred percent sure we're losing the people from parking on the, the through lanes on, on Clayton. I have not seen very many, but they are working real well. And these are enforceable because the police chief did approve them. The next steps, as I, as I, as I said, that, that these loading zones were identified as disabled parking, but the ninety percent of all of the loading zones were not ADA compliant. There are several disabled parkings in the downtown, but what I'd like to do, working with our traffic engineer, ADDA and ACPD, go and look at the downtown and create a workable parking, disabled parking plan that is ADA compliant and, and address the business needs. And then all of this, I would like to keep it maintained on our GIS for the, the downtown loading zones and for the downtown disabled parking spaces. It'll help us keep them maintained, and if we ever need to make, it changes, it'll be simple to, to make changes in GIS. And then continuing the next steps, as I said, these, these existing codes have been around a while, uh, there, there's a lot of, of, of things that have changed, and we will, will come to you eventually when we get to the, the disabled parking done and, and make some recommendations, working with the legal department, to make recommendations for changing these codes. And then prepare an agenda report for the April American Mission Agenda. It'll, it'll have this map only, uh, the same type of map, but the map will also have the, uh, disabled parking spaces that we're planning to do. And it will bring the, the proposed changes and modifications to the codes. And for that, I stand for questions.
Thanks for that, Steve. Um, let's see, uh, Melissa? And then Steve, if you could shop, stop sharing, then I can see the whole grid.
See the whole grid. Okay.
Um, I, I don't necessarily have a question. I think this is great. Um, you know, I, I know there's a need for more loading zones and there's been a lot of confusion, um, since we kind of kicked them out of the middle lane in, in Clayton Street, so I'm looking forward to this getting implemented. I just have a quick comment, though, about our downtown design guidelines. From what I understand, um, we have no requirement for new construction to incorporate any kind of alleyways that could function as loading zones. This was brought up to me by our, our former ADDA director, um, when it began to be a problem. Um, I think it was shortly after, um, Georgia Heights went up, we recognized that there was a need for loading zones and that new construction didn't incorporate them. So I, I just wanna put that bug in the mayor's ear, um, for if and when we readdress downtown design guidelines, that might be something we want to incorporate.
No, thanks for that.
No, thanks for that.
Uh, Tim?
Uh, just a really quick, uh, thanks for this, Steve, and I'm really excited to see that y'all are focusing on, uh, a disabled parking, uh, plan for downtown also, something that needs to happen. And, uh, just to put something out there that I've gotten some feedback on, I'm sure the commissioners have too, has been, uh, the, the height of our parking meters, um, are not a good height for folks who, um, are in wheelchairs and such. Um, I know there's been back and forth if, if we even have meters in our, our disabled, um, spots or not, but if we're going to, I think it's something that we should address is to have the parking meters be accessible to folk to are in wheelchairs.
Um, see, uh, Mike?
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Mayor. I'll just be real brief. I just, uh, thank you, Steve, for putting this together. Um, you know, I had a, I had a few, uh, beer distributors call me earlier before we, once we closed the three lanes there on Clayton, wondering how they were gonna get their product. And I don't know why they were calling me, I always thought they deferred to Patrick on, on, on those sort of issues, uh, cause I see who I defer to. Uh, but, um, appreciate you working on this, and I, I think, I think you see the importance of it, and the police chief does as well. You know, you've gotta had good, effective mechanisms for, for deliveries downtown, because the folks downtown are selling products, selling, you know, beverages, feeding people, and, and we need to make sure that those goods get to the businesses so that they can help us with our sales tax dollars and Splos dollars and T-Splos dollars. So thanks, Steve, for paying attention to this.
Thanks, Mike. Jesse?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to take about ten seconds to say, you know, we spend a lot of time deliberating all the controversial stuff, but sometimes we get stuff real right, and I just wanna thank, uh, my colleagues, uh, Commissioner Hamby and Commissioner Edwards for spearheading this, it sounds like, and, and thank staff for being so proactive and responsive, so.
All right. Any other input? All right, we move on to the third in the downtown trilogy. Thanks, Steve, we appreciate it.
Steve gets a gold star on time there, and, uh, we'll see if Suki can, can keep up with that. Uh, but we did wanna present those together. I know that, um, Steve's told you that, uh, we talked about it, whether or not to bring that through in March, we're gonna delay to April, but we wanted to put that in front of you because Suki, I think some of the locations of what you're about to talk about involve some of the loading zones, just so you all get it in one sitting. So with that, Suki, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, and I hope to be as efficient, um, but not sure people will praise the garbage talk. Garbage very rarely gets praised, often forgotten, um, especially in the downtown area. Can you guys see me really, can you see the presentation, am I up?
Good.
Excellent. Uh, just starting, just giving you a glance on this first page of how we normally handle trash downtown, our bags set on the curb. And what we're discovering tonight, some of the new commissioners may not have heard this, those who've been on our commission for some time have heard it multiple times, but we'll go over real quickly the purpose, I'm not gonna go over the history, it's here for you to consume on your own. Our current approach, what we had to do for COVID, and then some updated eco station plans and costs, and then hopefully some next steps. Of course, we're here just to present, um, a different way of collecting trash downtown to protect our new investment on Clayton in particular, that'd be the starting point with the idea to expand all over downtown. The history located here. Our current approved method, still per ordinance and adjoining policy, is bags on the curb and cardboard loose on the curb, um, and this is prior to COVID, these are just some pictures. Daytime trash doesn't look like this. Some of you consume downtown mainly during the day. You're not gonna see these type of piles, but at night, we get about twice as much the tonnage, um, that we do during the day, sometimes three and four times if it's a large event. So currently, we pick up trash from two in the afternoon approximately to approximately six in the morning, um, and we have two shifts to do that. We have what we call a second shift and then the night shift that picks up trash, and then we do have litter techs, but their job is not to pick up trash like this. The litter techs are there to make sure that our sidewalks are clear, clean, and gutters are clean. So basically, we're downtown twenty-four, seven, but only from two to six, seven days a week to collect trash, and this is our current method. During COVID, we had to make some changes, especially at the beginning, with the uncertainty of how the virus, um, would affect our department, um, and some early indications that it could really affect sanitation or solid waste workers. Uh, we had done pilots, in the history portion, you'll see that we did a pilot, um, in the spring and in the fall with dumpsters to see if they would work during the height of events downtown. So what we did for COVID was just, we mimicked what we did the, in the fall of twenty nineteen when we piloted dumpsters during home football game weekends, we dropped those dumpsters into the areas that you see on your screen. Right now, we still have dumpsters down there, and thankfully, we still do, because COVID actually just hit, um, our downtown crews, but we've been rather lightweight, uh, the last month and a half with COVID hitting some of our staff that work downtown. But our dumpsters are located in, uh, the loading zone, um, in front of the Georgia Theater, um, right now, in the loading area in front of Urban Outfitters, in the loading zone in front of Allgood, yes, there's a small loading zone there. Um, Clayton Street sidewalk, um, outside of Hilton Garden Inn parking deck, um, we, we call it our Lazy Shopper location, they're actually on the sidewalk, and then Boarshead Alley has a couple of our dumpsters. Again, these were meant to be temporary and we hope to get them, you know, get back to what we'd call normal operation soon. Um, just gotta get back to a full staff so that we can, um, be down there like we were prior to COVID. These are what the dumpsters look like. For new commissioners, you may not have seen, the dumpsters we chose for the downtown district were plastic, um, so we wouldn't make all the racket, the metal ones, um, often make a lot of racket when you're emptying them, so we went with the, uh, molded recycled plastic that are made right here in our state in Tylerford County, which we're pretty proud of finding this company, they do a great job, um, and they've been durable, they, they're really good about working with us. We have noticed some wheel issues since we've had them downtown and some rod issues with the lids, but they're trying to work with us. Um, you know, I've made a couple calls, um, and, and they're, they're really easy to work with and they're close by if we need them to make any changes, but these are what the dumpsters look like. Um, and these, excuse me, I think Cory, and Cory Jones is here, too, he's giving me feedback. So if anybody has a technical question, Cory Jones is our collections administrator is on the line. Uh, but these are what the dumpsters look like right now, there's no, um, kind of eco station or enclosure around them since they were meant to be temporary. All right, we're back here today for the permanent ask. We would love to have eco stations, um, especially on the low case, everywhere eventually, but especially where we're spending millions of dollars on sidewalk improvements, um, infrastructure improvements along Clayton. Um, and so that's why we're here in hopes that you will consider changing the way we deal with trash and recycling downtown. So upon walking Clayton several times with Steve Decker, also with Derek, with the fire department, with the police department in the past, trying to look at air, and with ADDA, trying to look at areas that would be safe, approved for fire, not cause any egregious, uh, issues, um, with fire department, um, these are the locations, um, that we feel like would be best for safety, for customer usage, and of course, for us to eat, for ease of emptying or accessing them, accessing them, excuse me. Um, so Hall Street, we went, I went one outside, we had some question on where and the block between Hall and Lumpkin, uh, we could have an eco station, and there's at least one location, we feel like, Steve, um, Decker helped me out with this one, where we could cut into the sidewalk, still have sidewalk access, um, and still have a nice eco station there on the corner of Hall across from, um, uh, where Last Resort now has their nice outside area. Um, but then getting into the T-Splos zone, um, or at least getting into the T-Splos zone where customers in that zone would need to walk to the trash dumpsters, the first one would be the loading zone across from the Georgia Theater. We have, uh, dumpsters there right now, we'd love to have an eco station in that location. All these locations, I did walk with Steve Decker, um, and to get his comments and concerns about using some of the loading zone for an eco station area. Um, the corner of Clayton, this is probably the least favorable, especially by ADDA, I have talked to ADDA at length, um, just two weeks ago. The corner of Clayton Street and College Avenue outside the Wuxery. Um, the loading zone in front of Allgood, we could actually offset it slightly, I know Allgood would hate to have it blocking their entire storefront. We feel like we've worked with our engineers, our consultants, that we could, if you're facing Allgood, we could adjust it to the right slightly so that, um, the, they wouldn't block all of Allgood storefront. Um, but that's one location we're recommending. The loading zone on Jackson Street, um, in the block between Clayton and Washington. And then lastly, we would, uh, love to be able to keep the dumpsters outside Lazy Shopper, but there is some issue with being able to actually enclose it with our artistic eco station, um, that we're gonna look at a little bit harder, um, to see if there's, you know, two panels or three panels and a different way to open it and, and, and still enclose it artistically, um, so that it's not an eyesore for visitors to our community. Um, also the picture in here on this screen, I do wanna tell you, um, Sandusky, um, Ohio, um, just in, uh, the last several months, put out what they called dumpster huts. I thought Commissioner Hamby might like a different term, um, that came term. Um, that came from uh, Ohio, but they're calling theirs dumpster huts. And this is an example of their dump dumpster hut in Ohio that they actually just started rolling out last month. Here is a map of the eco stations. The ones in black are the ones I just went over. I did choose to, and it's kind of hard to tell, the purple ones, um, the locations, I will just verbally tell you, the purple ones were alternatives. After discussing with ADDA, um, they felt like we needed to look at some alternatives, especially for the corner of College and uh, Clayton, the, the outside the Wuxi site. They want us to look at the, the parking deck again, uh, which we have used for Twilight before. We have had dumpsters in the parking deck there. And we were considering that as a site for Washington Street more than Clayton. So definitely we could look at it with the eyes of businesses on Clayton using that site. The alleyway um, behind or beside Mayflower, um, we have, the biggest issue there was with the fire department. We walked that site with them um, over a year ago. They felt like it's doable. It's not their favorite site, but it's definitely doable. Um, and staff tried it out and we can actually easily um, roll a dumpster in there and back out of there. That's a secondary site. Um, again, and then I, I know you probably don't want me to hear this, but I always like to be proactive with trash. It's easier being a little proactive than reactive, trying to figure out how we're going to deal with it, is if you do close off College Square. We could have, you know, some sort of artistic eco station with some other, you know, bike racks connected to it or something that would be cool, that could take care of trash there on College Square and even um, uh, kind of spill over into the Clayton area potentially to take away that corner, that corner lot with the Wuxi. Um, the other um, purple um, alternative site was the Jackson Street Alley, which I think would almost be near impossible, but ADDA did want me to potentially discuss with the five business owners or the owners of that alleyway. I think it would pose a fire risk. Um, and I know also upon already talking to Blind Pig, that's where they have their grease trap emptied back there and they have to get a van in there for, when they empty the grease trap. So they're not without, uh, none of it would be insurmountable, I don't think, but definitely would have to be a conversation for that alternative site. So these are what staff has suggested. We have walked again with Derek and then with Steve, with fire department over a year ago, police department, all the necessary entities to look um, to see if these would be uh, acceptable sites for eco stations. Took it one step further and got some designs. We first started designing with a more permanent thought in, in mind. And then actually thanks to Derek came up and said, you know, why don't you make them like bus shelters where we could easily put them up, but then take them down if they don't work or if move them if we had to do something downtown as far as construction, et cetera. We loved the idea. Um, and so we ended up reaching out to Lecour, um, who makes the transit bus stops. Um, and so we were looking at fabricated metal uh, eco stations with a roof. It could be a roof like those uh, dumpster huts you saw. Um, and they could be removable, fairly easy and reusable, which was important for us as staff. Um, of course lockable for safety. Um, the lock and the lighting would be solar powered. Um, rolling gates that roll out, out. They don't swing open like barn doors to impede traffic. And then make them artistic, like the bus stops, but still opaque, um, unlike the bus stops that you can see through. Here, I just wanted to bring the bus stops we're talking about. Staff, they tried to design one. Um, just, we're not designers. So I just decided to put in a picture of the bus stop that inspired um, some of our thoughts about eco stations downtown. These would be some that kind of inspired the thought to look at the eco stations a little differently and less permanent than we have in the past. Um, and so, and this is just a preliminary estimate from Lecour that actually uh, works with transit to make those um, bus shelters. So you can see the estimate there, it'd be approximately 125,000 just for the stations that we proposed on Clayton in the new construction area. And then I just wanted to update um, you all on what we've been doing downtown real quickly. Um, if you haven't noticed, Solid Waste, we placed big belly containers with the help of Central Services. Six sets are in College Square. We chose to go with big bellies because they can hold uh, more capacity um, for longer periods of time. And what we did was we kind of monitored that area and felt that that would be needed. Um, especially if that college uh, square continues to grow and people go there, eat, there's going to be more um, food containers and food packaging that will need to be recycled or, or trashed there. So the big bellies are, are working out nicely for us. Um, Solid Waste also is requesting 25 new cigarette butt receptacles from the T-sploß. We would like to replace them to make sure everything looks nice and new for you all. So 25 would do us in the T-sploß area. And then Solid Waste is working with Sploß on the new pedestrian trash and recycling containers for the T-sploß area on Clayton. And this was a style that was selected during public input. Uh, now it seems like a million years ago. I think it was over two years ago. Um, but this style um, was overwhelmingly selected from public input. We didn't have a tremendous amount of public input, but we did have some. And then staff also um, is uh, very happy with this style as well. And our next steps uh, would be, I think March might be too ambitious. We had, had been working on an agenda report, um, but we found some additional policies that would need to be changed since the way we do business with garbage and recycling downtown has been the same way for many, many years. Um, but we do want to bring an agenda report to finalize locations and propose all the code and solid waste policy, uh, policy uh, 10 in solid waste actually uh, dictates how we pick up trash downtown. Um, and those changes would have to be made for eco stations going in first at Clayton with the bigger picture of going and expanding all of downtown. All right, did I beat Steve?
We uh, we, we, we've got the uh, employee marathon here and uh,
Sorry, I know it's late and I was trying to talk fast.
You're, you're in the semifinals at a minimum. Um, and uh, and, and we're going to see if commissioners do just as well. Commissioner Hamby?
Sure. Thank, thank you, Suki. And I think you did beat Steve. So, and it's looked much more interesting presentation. No offense, Steve. But uh, I called, I called Manager Williams today and told him I would not give him, you know, I, I said, I will not give you a hard time on, on some issues here, here recently. He goes, was that going to be every time or just tonight? I said, don't, don't get your hopes up. It'll be just for tonight. So um, I'll try not to give you a hard time. Uh, Suki, you do a good job, but there are two points I want to make about, about the presentation. Uh, the first one is over by Hilton Garden Inn. And you've already alluded to the, to the amount of money we're spending on Clayton Street. You know, the $200 million we're spending on Bethel, $80 million we're spending on the, on the Classic Center. And I would just hate for them to come, you know, the, the people going to the arena for whatever reason, and then cross the street and see the dumpsters sitting there. So I, you know, I, I would like for us to see some sort of, I'm, I'm gonna call them dumpster, dumpster hut until you, until you, uh, until you help me out here. I'll start calling them eco stations at some point. But you know, some sort of dumpster hut to cover up the dumpsters that people, I, I just believe, I just know that first impressions matter and, and um, you know, if we got visitors or business people who may want to start business here in town, that we want to make sure that it, that it looks good. So um, I'd kind of like to see something done there so that it's in the agenda report that we can vote on, that we decide downtown will have some enclosure around. You know, I'm not leaving it up to you how that will look, but, but that's an important part there. But the other second part is this, you know, we are spending all this money on downtown and our areas around downtown. And I think, you know, and I, this may be more of a commissioner for Manager Williams, but certainly we have our budget cycle coming up. And you know, I don't know how many more dumpster hut eco stations that you may need to cover the rest of downtown. But I remember a previous presentation that you gave and, and also before you, Jim Corley gave, that one of the problems you have with the, with the collection system now is people cut their, you know, the workers cut their hands on the bags and stuff like that. And also the last presentation you gave on this, you were, you were very, I felt spot on saying, we don't need two different ways of collecting garbage downtown. You know, let's all do it the same way. And I think for our businesses, they would want it the same way as well. And if this is more efficient, I think we ought to look at that just from an operational cost standpoint. So what I'm asking is during this next budget cycle, you know, I'd like to see us, I'd like to, I don't know what it's going to cost, but I maybe put this in the agenda report that's coming up, if that's all right with Manager Williams, so that we can figure out a cost that we need to start looking at to see what it would cost uh, to cover all of downtown. And I'll say, you know, there's, there may be a couple sources of revenue. I know we, you mentioned we're going outside of the T-sploß range for the Hall Street one, but certainly we have the Sploß money that, you know, I don't, I don't know how they're, how they're paying for things versus Sploß versus T-sploß, but I know with Sploß dollars, we did use uh, those dollars for all of the parking meters downtown. So it didn't just involve Clayton Street, it involved all of downtown to buy those parking meters. So if there's a way where we could, where we can sort of use Sploß dollars uh, for, for paying for covering all of downtown, that, that would be great. Uh, another option could be, Mayor, the mayor and I can maybe bring it towards forward to the um, to the Downtown Development Authority to see if they could help, help make a contribution to it. I don't know what, what that would be or what the amount would be or if, or if they would. But certainly I see some benefit in the ADDA doing that just because it helps cover, you know, if it helps keep operational costs low, that helps keep what the businesses downtown are going to pay as far as garbage collection rates go. So, so there is some benefit there. So I guess two things, just that Hilton Garden Inn one on the, on the, you know, just making sure that's covered in the agenda report and, and whether or not, how we can move forward, how many stations you need to cover all of downtown, the cost and, and, and what that would, what that would mean as we'd start discussion, our budget for next time. If that, if that could be something in the agenda report, that would be very much appreciated. And I'll start calling them eco dumpster, eco, you know, eco dumpsters or eco stations. So, so thank you, Suki.
Oh, my goodness. I think I need a bottle of champagne. Thank you, Commissioner Hamby.
I mean, the, the new folks need to recognize Allison and, and, and the mayor both know this. I mean, I've come a long way. So the burden and the medication have helped, but I've come a long way.
I, I want, I appreciate the comments, Commissioner Hamby. And I sincerely uh, thank you for your comments here and the good feedback on how we could potentially handle um, and expand this. Cause you're exactly right. We don't want multiple ways of dealing with trash downtown.
Well, and I, we both, I think we both want downtown to look good and to make that good. I think we all do. So to look good and to make that good impression. And we want to make sure the investments we are making downtown um, are, are paying off. So, so thank you, Suki.
For sure. Thank you.
And thanks for that comprehensive sort of global thought about downtown, Mike. What, when, when you said uh, uh, you, you and I might be able to do something, I thought you were going to say that we've both got big trucks and we can uh, bring them to bear downtown. Um, to round up some trash. Um, I'm gonna uh, turn to uh, Commissioner Thornton and then uh, Commissioner Hool and Commissioner Link. Ovi, you're muted.
I am muted. Now I will start all over again. Suki, you know, I always appreciate your work and um, the uh, the, the integrity that, that even with your staff. So was this presentation just for downtown? Or, or can we expect um, another presentation from you very soon for the outlined areas?
Are you speaking, Commissioner Thornton, more on like hauling, the way we haul?
I'm speaking about it all. Everything you talked about was downtown. And I'm gonna be honest with you, that is not my clientele per se. And I would, I, I, I've even talked to uh, County Manager Blaine, uh, Williams, excuse me, Blaine, uh, County Manager Williams about concerns in my area. Are we, am I going to expect some ideas and plans like you presented for downtown, for the outlining areas?
And, and Commissioner Thornton, if we could, I'd love for uh, Suki and I to sit down with you and talk through those.
No, 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 that, that's not what I asked. I asked, was there some plans already in play for the outside, um, the outside area? And if not, let's just say it's not and we'll, we'll, we'll move on.
Well, not with regards to the eco stations. Those right now are concentrated on downtown.
Okay. And that was my question. Was this a downtown presentation and not the outskirts? Okay. So then, so then I go to my next spot. We have uh, homeless encampment areas downtown. And I want to know, nothing you presented um, addressed those encampments that are in the downtown area. And I'm really embarrassed because uh, I actually walked them uh, with uh, Charles Hardy and the Alliance on Sunday. And that, that is downtown. It's in my district. And I don't see anything in your presentation that addresses that, that issue. So when you're talking about downtown and the Hilton and, and all of that stuff that people are visiting, we still have people who are in the downtown district homeless um, in encampments. Now, I'm not saying that to uh, for nobody to go and, and bulldoze them and push them out. I just think that um, those hidden areas are just important to downtown. And I didn't hear anything. So I'll go back to, I'll, I'll leave, I won't leave nobody on the hook. I'll go back to County Manager Blaine, uh, Williams. We can talk about it later, but it is, these conversations and our, our decisions and what we do is becoming very elitist to me.
Just to kind of talk a little bit about the origin of the, the downtown, we, we've been working on the central business district collection for a number of years. So.
Okay. That's, that's okay. I'm good.
Director Jansen had that as an assignment, um, given that sort of dense business core. Um, but, but certainly, uh, you know, I, I do want to credit Solid Waste for having done a great deal of work with the homeless population. Um, they have a program that they typically run for neighborhood cleanups. And they've been pivoting that neighborhood cleanup program to support homeless uh, community members and those uh, and those volunteers really, you know, who've also been providing outside support. So um, I, I do want to give them credit and, and I've, you know, even followed up to ask, how can we work with some of those homeless providers to have a really consistent support mechanism there? Um, and obviously as the specific locations of individual encampments shift, you know, we, we have to shift our focus as well. So I appreciate you.
I appreciate that, Kelly. I appreciate that. And again, before you cut me off, all I'm saying is that I would like to have those conversations um, which Blaine offered um, about the encampments in my area. So I don't know about nobody else's area. I'm talking about District Nine. So thank you, Kelly, for clarifying, but I just want to have, I want to go on record having those conversations with Suki and, and the manager.
Oh, thank you for that. Let's see, I think uh, Commissioner Link was next. And then I know there were one or two more.
Um, I think Commissioner Hool was before me. Is that right, Jesse?
You want me to go now?
You want me to go now? I can.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, well, uh, Suki, thanks for this. I love talking trash and deeply appreciate the work that Solid Waste as a department does. So you know, gushings aside, I have uh, three questions for, for you. Uh, the first is if, I guess hopefully when, we expand our municipal composting services. I'm curious what the potential is for incorporating compost into the eco stations and/or the smaller pedestrian walk-up receptacles.
Some of the larger eco stations, we've actually, uh, Corey and I measured putting containers in the eco stations for compost. You're not going to want to use a dumpster for compost typically downtown. You're going to want roll carts where we can service them with greater frequency. Um, and so if you just have organic separated from everything else. So we have taken that into consideration. Not at every site, Commissioner Hool. We, we, like the site that's challenging the outside Hilton, there's, there's no, we can barely fit the dumpsters in there. So we wouldn't be able to there. But we, I think there are enough other sites that we looked at where we can fit some roll carts in there. And then the second uh, question was uh, for, oh, the ped cans. Uh, the ped can company that we're using is out of North Carolina or South Carolina. I apologize, but they actually have, the really awesome thing about this company, you can add a third bin, a brown, if that's your color for composting. And so we could add that, the, the limitation would be though, space on the sidewalk. Um, so it might be uh, Commissioner Hool, that we'd have to look at strategic locations for a third bin. Um, but that's the beauty of these ped cans. You can add easily to them.
Awesome. Uh, I don't want to, this is like, it's more a long-term, I'm getting that back. Awesome. I don't want to, this is like, it's more a long-term, is that me, or is that somebody else? No, there we go.
Go ahead, Jess.
Thanks. And, yeah, sorry, I lost my train of thought there. Hearing myself is creepy. Oh, yeah, but insofar as we can incorporate the space at least where, where possible for, for compost pickup, which, you know, I'm unsurprised that y'all are already planning to do that. But I think that'd be great. I'd love to see us move that direction as soon as possible as a community. My second three questions is, what does the repair and maintenance look like for these eco stations in terms of what kinds of costs we can expect? I'm imagining if these are built by a proprietary company, that there might be materials that staff can't really fix. And I'm just kind of curious, you know, things downtown tend to take a beating. So what should we expect in terms of having to repair hinges and things?
I think once we talk to the company that we would potentially choose more in depth, they could give us some information about maintenance. And you are correct. I will say though, our current trash cans have been down there prior to me arriving with the county. Although the lids are in horrible condition, the bins themselves have survived. So, but definitely, Jesse, I don't have the information on hand to answer, excuse me, Commissioner Hool, but I, I can get that for you. Because certainly, it's always an issue downtown when you're talking about infrastructure.
Thanks, yeah. And I just imagine that doors on hinges will have a tendency to get messed up more frequently than your average barrel might.
And we're trying to stay away from hinges. We're having rolling doors is the idea. The rolling door, for that reason. Hinges don't work really well, even on our dumpster corrals, dumpster huts, eco stations around the county. Also, I wanted to add with the compost, we also looked at potentially having a roll cart in the eco, the larger eco stations for charm items as well.
Thanks, yeah. My last question, and maybe this is kind of jumping to the next item on our agenda, but I figured it might be relevant. I've heard this mentioned, these eco stations as potentially being incorporated into the Bethel redevelopment design. And I'm just curious if while you're here, you're able to speak to whether that's been decided upon or not.
I don't know if it's been decided upon. I did present to the designers and the planners. I showed them examples that we pulled from around the United States, sent them most recently, the Ohio example, the dumpster huts that just went out last month. I gave them all the information we have, we had done, and some suggestions on how you could even expand it to include a charm trailer, bike storage. There were a lot of options, we thought, that would make better sense in an apartment complex, a place like Bethel, that we were pretty excited about it. But I can't speak to whether they incorporated any of that, that conversation we had with them.
Okay. Thanks a lot.
Thanks, Jesse.
Jesse.
Go ahead, Melissa.
Go ahead, Melissa.
Okay, yeah. Sukie, thank you so much. This has been a long time coming. I, I recall having you presenting at work sessions about this issue when I first got on the commission six years ago. And I'm really glad to see it coming to a head and, and the end is in sight. I think they look great, and I like the dumpster huts or trash shacks or whatever we want to call them. And I, I know it's going to be a big benefit to your staff. I know that, you know, not, the, the trash on the, the streets is not only unsightly and smelly and, you know, it clearly posed a public health and safety challenge, but your staff was frequently injured by those broken bottles and bags and stuff. So I'm hoping this will definitely make their lives a lot easier. And, and I'd want to echo Commissioner Hamby's suggestions that we, we do go ahead while we're having this conversation, have some idea of what it would take to roll it out throughout downtown and in other places, you know, whether it's Bethel, or maybe we look at Five Points in Normal Town, and, you know, other places where you do have that density of, you know, food oriented businesses that produce a lot of trash. So I think that's an idea. And as far as money to pay for it, I'm curious, if Manager Williams, if you, if you could let me know if maybe that hotel motel tax increase funding could apply to this, considering it's supposedly only able to apply for stuff that has some kind of tourism benefit. Would that be a funding source?
Commissioner Link, I would need to look into that to verify that.
Verify that.
Okay. I just want to put that out there. I know Commissioner Hamby's usually pretty good at shaking the change out of the couch cushions to find these things come budget time, but that just occurred to me. That might be a new revenue source. But I think they look good. And I'm also very excited about the potential for getting local artists to participate in the design of these. I, I think those new bus stops with the panels are great, and they're a really good way to get a diversity of artists involved, you know, because all they really have to do is submit a 2D design and the company takes care of actually fabricating it. So I, I think that's a really exciting opportunity.
Thanks, Melissa.
Thanks, Melissa.
Anyone else?
Anyone else? Tim?
It's a quick question. And Sukie, one of your images and on the, on the trash can recycling cans you had kind of brought this idea up to me, because I had this exact situation with the little college square. I'm just kind of throwing it out there. Has anybody come up with like recycling cans that have like a rinsing, rinsing spigot like attached to the side of it or something, where you can like rinse your cups out before you throw them into the recycling thing? Because I have this, had the situation with coffee, and I was like, I had chocolate stuck at the bottom from my mocha, and I was like, I don't want to throw this in there, but I don't want to throw in the garbage. And I also thought they could be like, you know, double as bottle filling stations, something like that. I don't know if it's something that's out there we've ever thought about, but yeah.
We can call them, you know, something with your name, if we, Commissioner Denson. But the only place I've seen something is actually Waste Management Phoenix Open. They actually had a big container to empty your cups before, because everything is recycled or composted at that particular golf outing. And my husband's a huge golfer. Sorry for those that don't like golf. But I, I was able to attend, and they did have exactly what you're talking about, but on a larger scale to dump ice or excess drink before you walked out and recycled your cups. But I could look into smaller, something smaller I have not seen, Commissioner Denson. So like I said, we could patent it, name it after you. We can, we'll look, we'll, staff will look into smaller, more manageable locations.
Cool.
All right. The dump hut, the public art, the expansion of trash options. Any other questions?
I just want to thank, I want to thank everybody, and I do want to thank staff. I couldn't do this without Cory still hanging in there tonight. And I've got staff chiming in, listening in all over Athens. And so all, they are all probably popping a bottle of champagne or Coke or water, whatever it is. And so, and toasting Commissioner Hamby tonight. No offense to the rest of you, but thank you.
Well, can I ask a follow-up question? I don't, I don't need anything named after me. Yeah, I know, I know, I know it's Sukie. It's not a bad one. I just, this is more for Manager Williams as to what to expect on, on the agenda thing that we'll vote on. So by the time we see this, we'll have that Hilton Garden Inn thing figured out, right? And then, and then we'll have, have perhaps a cost to look at doing all of, all of downtown.
Yeah, yes, sir. And just to be clear.
I don't, I'm not looking for locations. I'm just looking for the cost.
Right. We can do an order of magnitude cost, and we can make reference to this was the feedback we received. And then we'll go about trying to identify those different sources of funding that you asked about, Commissioner Hamby and Commissioner Link asked about, and, and see if we can match up sources and uses on funding for that.
Okay. Because I, I don't know. Let's strike while the iron's hot. If we're making some improvements downtown, let's do it, do it all in one big thing. So, all right. Thank you.
Melissa, you got a follow-up? Muted, Melissa.
I just want to point out that, you know, if we had adopted a Clayton Street design that included a larger bump out at that end of Clayton Street, we might have room for a nice decorated dumpster hut at the end that wouldn't be naked dumpsters. Just pointing that out.
Dumpsters.
Dumpsters.
All right. We'll, we'll follow up. You'll see this again very soon. And in, in the interest of closely proximate projects, we are moving from the core downtown business district to north downtown for the next two presentations.
Well, I know we, we, I, I have to say, y'all, and I appreciate the lengthy night tonight, you know, talking about the Firefly Trail and the Firefly Bridge recently and the downtown project. You know, these are projects we've been talking about for 10 years. And so I really appreciate, and I want to echo what Sukie said, and all your thoughts that have gone into making this better. And we're moving on to a project that will, another 100-year project that is moving very quickly. And so there are actually three items for your consideration at the upcoming meeting. One is the acceptance of the master plan, the approval of the project concept, and approval of intergovernmental agreement with the Housing Authority to move the North Downtown Athens Project forward. Tonight, we have Robert Cheshire, our Director of Capital Projects, and Christina Davis, the Columbia Residential Development Manager, here to present both items. They're, they're listed separately, but they're connected. The project concept will be informed by the master plan. With that, I'll turn it over to Robert.
Thank you, Manager Williams. These next two presentations are going to both pertain to 2020 Sploes Project O2, which is the affordable housing. And the first presentation, we're going to review the North Downtown Athens Master Plan. And the next slide, we're going to share this, so you'll hear me say next slide in some cases. And I know we're late in the evening, so I'm going to hit the high points so that Christina really has some time to delve into the meat of this. I do want to give you a brief history, though, on the Sploes Project O2. In October 2019, through a memorandum of understanding, the mayor and commission voted to support the redevelopment of North Downtown Athens with $39 million if the 2020 Sploes referendum passed. And of course, in November of 2019, the referendum, 2020 Sploes referendum did pass. So allows us to do projects like this. And then in January and February of 2020, mayor and commission approved through an intergovernmental agreement with Athens Housing Authority, allowing them to use 2020 Sploes funds to develop a master redevelopment plan for the North Downtown Athens area. Now Christina's going to take it more into the master planning and start off with the history of that.
Thank you, Robert, and thank you, everyone, for allowing me to join you this evening. I think I've met many of you throughout the process of the master planning. It began in early 2020. And I think, again, Sukie and others have participated through a lot of the, the different events that included resident surveys, but also virtual charret, open houses, et cetera. We had to navigate through COVID, but I think the team did, did so quite well. I wanted to make a very clear distinction on the two different items that are, that were considered in the overview in the master plan itself. One you see outlined in pink here is the neighborhood transformation area. It's a broader lens, if you will. And what you see in yellow is the redevelopment area. And so this, in pink, is largely considered the North Downtown area. And in the yellow, which we're looking at, is a couple of ACC-owned parcels along Garry, Bethel Village, and College and Hoyt. The master plan itself, again, took a look at the broader neighborhood transformation area. You see that on your left, and the redevelopment plan area there on the right. And I'm going to keep it brief. And so one of the major takeaways from the master plan itself, there was an establishment of an urban street grid throughout the Bethel site, accessible Wetland Park that integrates stormwater management, obviously connecting to the Jackson Street Art Walk, et cetera, reconfiguring some roads, extending others. We really wanted to create a dense urban edge. What you're looking at here is a bird's eye view, looking northward. So College on your right, Garry at the bottom of the screen. And all of this is in the master plan itself, which you have a copy of or have access to. It is released to the general public for final comment period. And so really looking at different opportunities that exist in the North Downtown area to both preserve the existing affordable housing and expand it. But again, in the broader area, looking at redevelopment opportunities to help hold that urban street edge and really vitalize this area. Here you're looking at, in the bottom left-hand side of your screen, you're seeing the intersection of Hall and Hoyt and the Wetland Park. And then you're looking over towards downtown over what is currently Bethel Village and what we would like to see redeveloped. So we are looking at connections to Klaske Creek and a variety of public private spaces. There's also a contemplation of the neighborhood health clinic relocation and potential expansion. And we put in communication with them as well. And then there's some general, site-wide sustainability lens that we did take in conversations with many of you. The general overview of the master plan itself does qualify for lead for communities, and we're actually tracking at the silver level right now. Because if I can expand to full screen. I'm on full screen on mine, Carol. Now I'm not going to be fast. Is it full screen for everyone else?
We see the next slide, but it's, it's large enough, at least on, on my monitor to see clearly.
Interesting. Okay. All right. I don't know how to, is that any better?
Yeah, that's slightly larger.
And we also took into consideration solar ready, solar ready and EV design principles as well. Giving you a high-level overview, this is generally a density study of massing of the redevelopment area. Again, that tighter lines which extended the urban street grid throughout the current Bethel Village homes and the College and Hoyt properties. And you can see here the ground for active uses of one college, looking at the extension of Lumpkin up into the site, and then it terminates at Madison Street Extension. And of course, this plan, again, I've mentioned before, but the preservation and expansion of affordable housing units in this area is critically important. And of course, consideration for phasing any relocation and demolition and redevelopment itself. Here's an overview, and again, in the booklet itself, you'll find a lot greater detail. But generally, we're looking at a total redevelopment area hosting 222 units to somewhere between 700 and 800 units of housing. And that's where I was going to try to leave it.
Thanks, Christina.
Thank you so much.
Yep. We're going to lead into, you know, questions and discussion, but I do want to note that we also have on the conference call, Rick Parker, who's Executive Director of the Athens Housing Authority, and he can help answer questions, but also provide some additional information if, if needed. And then after the discussion, we'll, we'll finish up with next steps.
Thanks, Robert and Christina. Any questions at this point?
I've got a question. First of all, this, I think this is going really well. I, I did meet with Christina and Rick a month or so ago, got a preliminary glance at this. And I really like the way that they've incorporated this grid, you know, kind of, I mean, there used to be a grid there before the, the homes that were destroyed to make way for Bethel. There was, there was a existing street grid, and, and they've done a really good job of reinvigorating that, but keeping it very pedestrian-centric. You know, I know this is going to be a shock to a lot of folks when this goes up. This is a huge, huge portion of downtown, and it's a massive increase in density, but it is very much geared towards affordable housing, you know, low income as well as median income. I noticed the total, the unit totals, it's in unit totals. Could you tell us how many bedrooms approximately this translates into?
You know, Melissa, I should be able to tell you, but I don't have that. Let me see.
Melissa, this is Rick Parker. While she's looking for that, this will be evenly distributed, and evenly distributed by bedroom sizes as well as by, as well as by dwelling units. So you're not going to have bedroom, dwelling units evenly split and a massive disparity between bedroom sizes. I think you'll see, I think you'll see a I think you'll see, I think you'll see a relatively even split, both in units and bedroom sizes. But I don't know the total off the top of my head either.
Melissa, you're muted again.
Sorry, I'm looking at the slideshow on a different box. I just think that the public will have a better idea of the overall scale and the impact if we have a bedroom count, because that'll tell you an actual number of people, of new residents in the area.
Absolutely. We can get to that.
Go ahead.
I was going to say, we can get to that data. Right now, I think it's an estimate of about 1300 bedrooms. Melissa, you're muted.
Sorry, my thing is automatically muting for some reason. Yeah, I just think it'll give the public a better idea of what to expect, because we do speak of these projects in terms of number of bedrooms rather than number of units.
Thanks, y'all. Other input?
I guess, I guess. Who? I'm trying to stop in a quick state. I had a lot of really good conversations with Christina and Rick Parker. Yeah, there's an echo happening again. Okay. And I feel like a lot of the folks in this body have, and I know you all have had a really robust effort for public input as well, but I just want to invite anybody who's watching this, if you have lingering questions, to please contact us in advance of our agenda-setting meeting. I think it's going to be much more productive for all of us if we get those questions before we're arriving at the day where we're trying to vote on it. So there are lingering concerns and questions lingering on the community. I just wanted to kind of share that for anyone who might be watching this an hour later.
Yeah, this is Rick Parker again. I'd just like to say that the website is still open, and it's available, the master plan is available on the website to the public, along with a really good summary 15-minute video that walks you through the master plan, explains what's going on and why. And there's an easy way to get input to the design team on that as well. Website is ndathensplanning.com. And you can find all the information there and give input. In these next several weeks, we're still listening to the public and taking final input.
Yeah, thanks for referencing that site, Rick. There's lots of great material there. Any other input? Go ahead, Avita.
I want to say that the work that Christina and Rick has put together, it is a model that we should be following with all of our development. They did the due diligence to get the input. Now, I heard the concern, or the, what's the word? I heard the call from Commissioner Huell about people calling because there's still questions. I think we should take the opportunity to address all of those. And I thank Rick for saying this process is still open. We need to make sure we answer everybody's questions on development, not just particular ones that we want to kind of spotlight. The work that this group has put together, we should create a curriculum on how development should happen in this community. So it's open, and if any commissioner, I think I've called everybody today, or I sent you a text, I know that Rick Parker has called people. So if there's anything out there lingering that commissioners know and we're not getting a call, we need to, we need to know that and not pull this apart, that we will miss the deadline that we need to make. So I appreciate Commissioner Huell's outreach to people, but that last little comment that there's still questions, if there's any questions, now's the time to put it out there. But you had another opportunity, because I did call and I did text. We have a deadline, we've done our due diligence, and more than I can say about some other things that we've passed.
Anyone else before we move on to the next segment of the project master plan?
Me.
Go ahead, Carol.
Yeah, yeah. I want to, Christina and Rick and the whole team, and Avita's, and echo Avita's comments, because this, I've been following this process from the beginning. I've talked to some of the residents there who have just really appreciated their input being taken very seriously. And I do believe, as Avita said, that this is sort of a model for looking at how to involve the community in the development. And thank you, Christina, for making those two different outlines for the redevelopment plan for the Bethel Village versus the neighborhood transformation plan. And I do want to ask a question about the larger plan of North Downtown. And this is, well, I guess it's to educate myself, but I'm sure it's to educate some other people who may be viewing. So this is, this is a plan. Does this then require, or did we cover all the zoning changes and those items we voted on the last time we were voting? Or does there have to be anything different for what we're seeing in the neighborhood transformation plan of North Downtown?
In addition to that zoning approval that we've already been through, what we'll do is sort of a two-phase approval of these items that you're seeing right now. So we'll sort of accept this sort of broader conceptual development notion, and then the tighter, kind of more constrained, plan that involves use of the public Sploes funds.
And then I had someone, I think it might have been a comment to, an email to all of us, but I know it was something that came up during one of those charrettes about the use of the Planning Department, the former Public Library. And is that, has a decision been made on its fate at this point? Because we see this dense, high edge of downtown there on, what is it, Dougherty Street? Is that, is that a decision that's been made already or about the future? Is there going to be more community input on that area there?
No, Carol, this is Rick again. The, what happens with the city-owned properties, are those particular parcels, are, while we vision things for that, there's clearly nothing that is concretely designed. These are conceptual and visionary sort of products in the larger area, and they're a little bit more schematic and better fleshed out in the housing redevelopment area.
Right.
So no, there's nothing that, there's nothing that you will be committing to that guarantees that anything will happen outside of the, and Christina will get the phrase right for me, the redevelopment area, I believe that's the correct phrase. The smaller redevelopment area is the, is the more defined area, and the broader is a visionary concept plan that will probably evolve over time, over the next 20 to 30 years, but it will be there to help drive the vision for what North Downtown could and might be.
So the people that are concerned, express concern about that Planning Department building, and I don't have an opinion on it myself right now, they're going to look at this picture and think, oh, it's gone, but this is just.
No, that's not, that's not the case.
Okay.
If that were to occur, that's a decision local government would have to make, because clearly local government owns that property.
Right. And just, I also just want to thank Christina and her team for putting in that slide on the sustainability, so that we can make sure we have an option for providing alternative energy and more economical utility bills for the people who are living in the new development there. So thank you very much for addressing that issue.
You're welcome. By the way, there are three main contracts that we will be letting with this next design phase. One is for the civil engineering, it's necessary to do the infrastructure for the sites. The other is, of course, landscaping to take care of the public areas that will be constructed as part of the site. And the last is a sustainability consultant that we will be specifically hiring in order to help guide us through those sort of issues, plus all the lead issues that we'll be facing, because we're deeply committed to sustainability on this site as well.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for sharing that.
Blaine, is there anything else you wanted to add to that sort of forward momentum piece about either the micro level or the larger redevelopment zone?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. And I think this is important for folks that are watching to understand some of the, at least the intent. Rick's absolutely right. What happens with those buildings on the periphery are totally up to the mayor and commission, as they are publicly owned. But the intent with the Facility Space Modernization Sploes Project was, you know, of course, to build a judicial center and then renovate the municipal, the existing county courthouse as a municipal building, and relocate the city departments that are in the Dougherty Street building and other governmental buildings around Athens Clark County into, you know, a modernized, energy-efficient building. And then those sites that we vacate, including the Dougherty Street building, would be, you know, disposed of, given back to the private sector, sold for redevelopment and to try and promote more daytime usage in downtown, daytime activities to offset, you know, what's going on at night. So I just want to say that's the general concept, but there are no imminent plans right now. And of course, you know, we're three to five years out from getting to the renovation of that other building, so more to come on that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks. Go ahead, Avita.
Again, Christine, I can't even tell you how much I appreciate everything you've done. And I said it flippantly about develop, using this as a model on how we should move forward with any development. But Manager Blaine, I hope you take note, because I think this is something that we can use even with private developers, on how we have a community involved input, and we won't have the division with different developments. The last thing I want to say, I don't know where we are, but I hope we have not, I hope we are still talking to First AME Church about their needs next to Bethel. I know where we are now, maybe that's not, you know, maybe that's not the time. But when we start talking about retrofitting that Planning Department building or any areas in the back, I hope that we still have First AME on our radar as a community stakeholder that has expressed interest in growth.
And I see Christina nodding.
Yeah, Avita, we, we had early conversations, very, very early conversations to make them aware of the, of the plans before they went, or about the time they went public some time ago. We have engaged them, the Neighborhood Health Center, and the Athens Community Council on Aging, in regular conversations, because they are all neighbors to that area, and we are working with each of them in turn, and will continue working with them.
You know, and I, and I do want to say, again, you know, there's been so much, I have also made sure that residents in the Plaski area was, were, you know, are kept updated on these, because it's a community. And at least they know, they may not come to every meeting, they may not even have an objection, but, but I think when we're talking about what this is going to look like 30 years from now, it will be something that will be, that will be proud of the day we cut the ribbon, and 30 years later, because we will not be, because we will be inclusive and transparent in this work. So again, I want to thank you, Christine, I thank you for the trip to, to Atlanta with the residents, and we got a, we got, like, it was awesome, they got to see something else. So I thank you because you didn't have to do that, and I know that the residents felt special going. So thank you.
Thanks, Avita. Any other thoughts before we move on to the project concept?
Can I just jump in for a second here?
Yeah, go right ahead.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, in case it seemed somehow unclear or ambiguous earlier, I personally feel like this is fantastic. I think it's amazing to arrive at a work session and have kind of no questions, because I've already had a chance to talk with all the players involved here, and I think a lot of us on the commission have, and I think that there's been a really robust and impressive public engagement effort that really exceeds almost anything else we see. So I want to be clear that I feel very positively about this, and my assertion that folks should try to get in touch sooner than later is, if there's anyone out there who does have lingering questions, it works best for all of us to have time to field those questions before we're making the decision in the voting meeting. So, so that's all that, that question was aimed at. Thanks, y'all.
Thanks. All right, and see next steps on the screen now.
Thank you, Mayor. This will wrap it up, but the next steps, and as we've said many times here now, the final, the master plan's currently out for public comments, and I want to let everybody on the mayor, on the mayor and commission know that we have hard copies of the draft here in our office at City Hall, and you can go line by line and give it a check. It's, it's a well-crafted document, and, but there's still a few days to make some comments if you'd like to on them, and we'll make sure, obviously, to get those back to Christina and Rick. And then on the 23rd, maybe the 24th, probably the 23rd, we're going to wrap up the final master plan, and that's when it'll be released to the public and the mayor and commission. And then finally, on March the 2nd, we will take the master plan to the mayor and commission for your considerance to accept. So big things happening on March the 2nd.
Appreciate it. All right. Very closely connected.
Yes, so the project concept is coming along in the same agenda cycle to meet the demands of moving the project forward with the tax credit allocate, allocation that they have received, and it is totally informed by the master plan that you are well aware of. And so Robert and Christina, tell us what's involved with that, please.
Okay. And I know this has been said several times, but I think it's important to reiterate the difference between these two. A lot of times, a master plan and a project concept would follow probably maybe a month away from spaced out between each other, but it's important to know that that first presentation was, was the master plan. That was the larger area that we just talked about and defined, and Christina defined. This presentation is the project concept, and it narrows our focus down to the redevelopment area of Bethel Midtown Village and the Hoyt College Apartment Community, and then the immediately adjacent public properties. So I think that's just important to, to make sure we understand the real difference between these two. And it makes a little more sense when Christina gets into the meat of the presentation again. The purpose is to review the proposed project concept, and you'll hear that word used a lot, those words, project concept, in accordance with the North Downtown Athens Master Plan. And so you should, that illustration on the right should look familiar to you. That's what Christina showed just a little while ago in the other presentation. And again, that is the project concept area. That's the Bethel Midtown Village to the south, and then to the north, the Hoyt College Community Apartment Community. So I think this is important as well. I'm going to read it verbatim, because it's important to understand what the Sploes dollars in this, in the project concept part will be, and that is, project concept proposes the use, the use of 2020 Sploes funding to provide the horizontal public infrastructure needed to create buildable city blocks, and that's within the Bethel Midtown Village and the Hoyt College Apartment Community. Just a little bit of history, you already heard some of this in the last presentation. Again, I just think it's important to reiterate where some of the money has gone so far, but in October 2019. But in October 2019, Mayor and Commission through a memorandum of understanding voted to support the redevelopment of North Downtown Athens with $39 million if the 2020 SPOS referendum was passed. So $39 million of the Affordable Housing Project O2 are committed to, to the, to this redevelopment project. Then fortunately, in November 2019, the voters approved the 2020 SPOS referendum. And then in February, that's what we talked about in the last presentation, February of 2020 is when the Athens Housing Authority procured the services of JHP Architects to start the master plan, which Christina's group has also worked in that and got a lot of compliments. And I would give the same, same compliments as well. And then in December 2020 was when the Athens Housing Authority purchased Bethel property. And I don't think we've mentioned that, but that was another use of the SPOS 2020 funds. And then just recently on January 28th is when the SPOS user group voted to recommend the proposed project concept, which Christina is going to go over in just a second. All right.
Absolutely. Thank you, Robert. And so we've already laid the foundation with the master plan that we've reviewed. And as Blaine, as Manager Blaine Williams did indicate, that this project concept is based, the foundation of it is that master plan and specifically the redevelopment area, that smaller, more narrow focused area. And it prioritizes the scope of work for this SPOS Project O2 in two categories of must-have, highly-wanted, nice-to-have. That is based off of the SPOS legislation itself that was passed by voters. And it was developed and approved by the user group. So the must-haves in the concept plan is the demolition of all existing buildings in a phased approach. I think that's fairly critical for the Bethel Midtown Village property. And then the reconfiguration, reconstruction or extension of public streets, again, in the, in the Bethel Midtown Village property. Installation of public infrastructure and the creation of a regional stormwater detention and water quality facility that's also designed to serve as a public park. Similarly, in the highly-wanted items, you'll see a very similar approach, but there's the demolition of existing buildings in a phased approach on adjacently, on adjacent publicly-owned property. And then the same reconfiguration, reconstruction or extension of public streets in a phased approach on adjacent property. Installation of public infrastructure. And then to create a variety of public spaces for passive and active recreation was added to this list of highly-wanted items. And then the nice-to-haves, I take a moment here to just pause on this, which is, you know, this is the, if we have enough money in the Project O2 budget, these would be implemented. And that is the public, a part, public parking deck or a lot. Acquisition of any additional parcels so that it is in the public trust or enhanced sustainability measures. And before Commissioner Myers gets concerned or any others do, I would note that, again, that's, that's the enhanced. So if there's maybe some, one, one point towards certification or something that's astronomically expensive that we just can't foresee, right? Something that doesn't make a lot of sense, that's, that's why we put it there. But I think through our conversations, I think you understand that's a commitment of the team at large.
Thanks, Christina. And so again, we've got Rick Parker here as well to help answer questions or to provide some additional information that y'all might have. So we'll go into the discussion at this point. And then I do want to finish with next steps because I've got a couple of other things that I want to mention.
Questions, anybody, about how this pertains to our SPOS process? All right, Robert.
Okay. So the next steps, and these are important, they're going to follow basically what the last, the last did as far as the master plan. But so, but one addition here is in mid-February, we will be in a meeting with the 2020 SPOS Oversight Committee, which was just named recently. And, and their charge will be to confirm that the project concept fulfills the initial project statement and referent, as per the referendum. So we will be meeting with them on the 22nd, prior obviously to the March 2nd meeting. And then at the March 2nd, Mayor Commission meeting is when we will submit the project concept to you for hopefully approval consideration. And then these are items, and I think Manager Williams alluded to some of these, but I think it's important to kind of see how we're going to get to IGA number three, which will also come to you at the March 2nd voting meeting. So the first intergovernmental agreement was the authorization of the SPOS funds for the master planning. I think we mentioned that earlier, but I think that's important again. Then the second use of SPOS funds was the authorization of funds to, for the purchase of Bethel Midtown Village by the AHA. The third IGA, which is what's coming to you at the next, at the voting meeting, March 2nd, will be to authorize the use of SPOS funds for the engineering, the design and other related professional services in accordance to the master plan and the approved, hopefully approved project concept. And then finally, there will be a fourth, at least one more IGA, which will be pertaining to the construction, the demolition activity itself. So thought those are important next steps to, to go through with you and appreciate it.
Thanks, Robert. Any questions about the calendar? So you'll, you'll be voting on three related items on, on March 2nd on that agenda. Yeah, Carol?
A general question with this because I know it comes up again and again. And, and so I just want to hear it addressed publicly with the phased, phased, what do we call this word? Down of the buildings and then the buildings of the new and how that's going to impact on, on residents. Just so that I have it down. So when people ask me or concerned about, I can, I have the right words to use.
Great question. I, I don't know if Rick or Christina, either of you are well situated to talk about that.
Do you want to flip a coin on this one, Christina, or do you want me to start or?
Oh, you, you take it. I think the only thing I'll add before you launch them is that we do have an FAQ. And we're trying to be as transparent and open as we can to make sure that every one of you and also the general public have access to that information, both in the master plan and in the content on the website. But with that, Rick, you can, you can take it.
Sure. So we, we heard concerns from the very start on this project that we wanted to limit the amount of relocation off the site while the work was going on to the least amount possible. And that's there. So we are phasing this in order to make sure that gets done. The problem with phasing, of course, is that we're dictated to by the, by the topography as to where the first phase needs to go. Because stormwater affects absolutely every inch of the property, you can't construct your stormwater facility last. That has to come in the first phase. So that tends to dictate where the first phase is going to go, which then tends to dictate where the first buildings are that will require some level of relocation. We're keeping the relocation to as little as possible. Most people will be relocated back onto the site or remain on the site. And to the extent that anybody is relocated off the site, we're finalizing those, those details and plans now. They also have to go through HUD and through the Department of Community Affairs for the low-income housing tax credits. But what will happen is those people will remain our residents even if they are located off-site. They will continue to pay the exact same amount of rent. We will take care of all the relocation and moving costs, both if they have to go off-site temporarily. And we will pick up everything as they come back onsite. And the people who are off-site will automatically move into brand-new, first-class private market standard units when they come back onsite. But we're taking every precaution, one, to make sure that as few people as possible will need to be temporarily relocated off-site. And two, that we treat them the way we would want to be treated. And we pick up all of their costs and nothing about their rent amounts, nothing about their financial circumstances will change at all. They will remain our customers even though they might temporarily be off-site for a little while. And then after that first phase, we are hoping to then be able to hopscotch around in the succeeding phases, moving people from the older phases into the newer phases again with little or no relocation at all. That's what our, what our basic plans are. But obviously, it's a little early in the, in the process to know the exact numbers and exactly where we're going to be. We'll know later this summer, once the engineering work's done and we're starting to get into the final planning, what those final numbers really look like. Christine, anything you want to correct that I said or anything that you want to add?
No, I think it's a great concern and it's one that we've, we've heard and paid close attention to. So I think you've hit it all. I think that in general, the takeaway is the goal is to move folks one time out of their unit and return to their permanent unit. So it's hard in terms of moves. I don't know how you wanted to find that, a move off and a return. And so if the move out is off-site or onsite, the idea is that you return hopefully to the final unit to minimize that disruption. But again, there's a lot at play. So we've, we've done enough at the master planning level to be dangerous. And this project concept has stated that as a goal. But obviously, we need to now get going and, and get the details. That's exactly how that's going to work.
And for the public who are listening in, you need to understand that the right to return is guaranteed as a federal right. And that any relocation would be handled under the Federal Uniform Relocation Act. So residents have very strict, very specified rights under the law that we will follow very closely. And we'll probably even do what we did, we may very well do what we did with Brookside. And that is actually even bring in legal services to help explain those rights. So they're, they're not just hearing it from us, but they're also hearing it from independent third-party outsides. We want them to understand their rights and we will be, and, and they are protected under federal regulations.
Thank you. Christina, is this FAQ the one that's at the ACC Gov site? Because this, this one says October 2000, October 1st, 2019. So.
And that, that is not the one.
That's linked to from our website at the North Athens Downtown Development Project. So we probably want to get that updated.
Absolutely. And I, I want to make sure that everyone knows that the copy, our copy, for those of you who would like that on the commission. Manager Williams, I'll make sure you have an FAQ that we can also include, or correctly can include for pickup by any of you. So that if you'd like a paper copy of the entire master plan to flip through for your bedtime reading or the FAQ itself, we'll have that included.
Mayor, if, oh, go ahead.
Q on your website, Christina?
Ma'am?
Is it, is it on the North, the ND Athens Planning website?
Not, I don't know. But I know that we were, I think it was an email to commission FAQ. And generally, what we try to do is gather all the data that we can and make sure that we're all communicating as clearly as possible so that residents have gotten different versions. And I think y'all have gotten different versions. So.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Avita?
I just want to reiterate what Rick mentioned about legal services. I have been working very closely with legal, so they are available if, you know, if it comes to that. Patrick Davenport serves as a vice chair on the client board. We are not going to let anybody. I've heard so many rumors and some of those rumors are coming from people right here about people being displaced. But I am, I took that on personally. So whoever is perpetrating those rumors, we need to, you need to know, we do have legal services. Patrick and I are working very close with them to make sure the residents know their rights and response, and, and their responsibility, but they know their rights. So we need to nip that in the bud wherever we hear it at.
Yeah, we take, we take our promises to our customers very, very seriously. We never want to make a promise we can't keep and we will keep a promise that we make. And, and we want to treat our customers the same way that we would want to be treated. So we're deeply, deeply committed to making this as comfortable and as good an experience as we can for the residents there, even though it's going to be a construction zone and there will be some aggravation. You know, that occurs with construction in the area. But we will be, we will be paying close attention to the residents. That's why we're doing this after all.
Thanks, everyone, for being so diligent in, in supporting folks' transition over there.
I just, I, I want to thank also, this is a unique partnership. I think everybody's bearing witness to that. And, and so I, I want to be clear for those watching. And this is a lead-up to the intergovernmental agreement number three that you're being asked to approve on March the 2nd. And we are staying true to the SPOS delivery process that you approved years ago, where we have a user group and we have a project concept and we're going to come back to you if you, should you approve on March 2nd with preliminary plans. That will be brought back to you in work session. There'll be public input. And you will help, you know, approve that and move that forward after you, after you've had a chance to look at it. And, and again, the $44 million that you proposed and the voters approved for affordable housing, about $5 million of that to be set aside for other projects, you know, going forward in the next 12 years. That left $39 million for the project. $18 million has been used thus far to purchase the property in partnership with the Athens Housing Authority. The remaining funds y'all will be used for what we're calling the horizontal development. And that's all those things that you saw in the project concept and will not be used for any of the vertical, the buildings. And so we'll build out, you know, with, with your funds, the citizens' funds. You know, there'll be phased demolition, as you heard, folks won't be relocated. It will draw out the, the project in that there's also different sections, different tax credit applications that have to be approved. So this will take some time. As far as design in this first project concept you're being asked to approve, the, all of Bethel Midtown Village and College in Hoyt will be designed at a high level. And then over time, we will drill down depending on that phasing with final construction plan. So we, we also felt like, and I think this is important to mention, typically, you know, the user group would, like you just did with the Classic Center, recommend an architect after going through an RFP and you would approve that architect. In this case, since there needs to be very good coordination between the work that's done horizontally on the site as well as the vertical, we think in the interest of being a good partner, that you in the intergovernmental agreement allow the housing authority and their partners to, to select the design professionals who will then work with the user group and present preliminary plans to you for approval. I say all that to say it's a unique partnership. We're trying to be mindful of what's going to move this forward. But we also want to give you and the public the opportunity to weigh in at different milestones. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thanks, everyone. Any further questions about this? All right. So you will see those in just a week at our agenda setting meeting, these kind of three agenda items lined up back to back. Christina, Rick, thank you so much for joining us. I appreciate it.
Thank you. And thank you for the support and partnership, Mayor.
Thanks, y'all.
All right, two left.
Home stretch. So Haley Banerjee, our Housing Community Development Director, is here to present tonight on CDBG recommendations. This is the regular round, but it went through the normal process with applications being submitted in December. She'll talk you through that. Of course, you just approved the CDBG CV, the COVID, the special allocation that was fast-tracked to get those funds into the community. This is separate from that. This is the normal allocation, the regular allocation. And that has worked its way through the normal process with the Vision Committee. And Haley's here to present those recommendations to you for your approval on March, on, in, in April, rather.
Thank you, Blaine. I'm going to share my screen.
All right, we've got it.
Okay. Computer is slow because I have a million things up as always these days. All right. So as Blaine said, these are our regular CDBG recommendations. And we did go through our normal process. And just as a reminder, these funds will be available starting July 1st of this year. those CDBG CV funding recommendations back in January. So our consolidated plan, just as a reminder, is our strategic plan that guides how we spend our CDBG funds. As part of that consolidated plan, we are required to use citizen participation, which is how we utilize our Vision Committee. Um, our Vision Committee, um, was very heroic this past year in helping us review these applications. Not only did they review 14 applications as part of the CV review process, they also reviewed an additional 27 applications. So in total, 41 applications in a very short timeframe. Um, and these are our Vision Committee members. And so they met, um, one week in January to do the CV recommendations and then the following week to do the regular recommendations. So I want to take the opportunity to thank them for their service. It is a lot of work to read through those applications and I thank them for their thoughtful discussion. Um, and just as a reminder, and I mentioned this in January as well, but one tweak that we've made to our Vision Committee process in years past, we asked our Vision Committee members to say yes or no as a vote to each of these project applications. Um, this year we asked them to rank them numerically per different funding area, and we feel that this was a better representation of how the Vision Committee felt in terms of priorities. And as a reminder, these are consolidated plan goals. So we have six of them. Affordable housing development and redevelopment, economic development and workforce development, education and enrichment, homeless services, special populations and public infrastructure. These are our two neighborhood revitalization plans. Um, so this is both, um, related to East Athens and Census Tracks 301 and 302, and the Hancock Corridor and Census Track six and nine. Um, for HUD funding purposes and for CDBG purposes, the benefit of designating these kind of revitalization areas is that, um, for our funding goals related to public services, we have a 15% cap on public services funding, um, for any projects that fall within that category. For agencies that are community-based development organizations operating in either of these two areas, they're actually able to skirt that cap and are able to fund those activities in those particular areas. So this year we received 27 regular CDBG applications requesting approximately $2 million. Um, they were seeking $1 million for affordable housing activities, $291,000 for micro enterprise and economic development activities, $78,000 for public facilities and improvements, and $793,000 for public service activities. This is our proposed action plan for these CDBG funds. You can see we're recommending $641,000 for affordable housing activities, $274,000 for administration, $217,000 for economic development, $205,000 for public services, and $34,000 for public facilities and improvements. And you'll see at the bottom, our estimated CDBG allocation. We have not received our actual allocation this year. Um, that number is based on the three-year average from the past three years of funding allocations. So these recommendations are subject to change. Um, once we get that actual number, if it's decreased, of course, we'll have to work with those, um, funding recommendations. If it's increased, which I think there's a very real possibility, it will be increased with our new administration. And given the fact that we're still in the middle of a global pandemic, we will come back to you with, um, some revised recommendations for you to approve down the road. And that is our recommendation breakdown in pie chart form. So these are our affordable housing applications. You can see all four applicants were recommended for funding. Um, and you can see the Vision Committee priority breakdown on the right there. And for time, I'm not going to read through each of these application names, but um, those are our four affordable housing partners. They are all currently funded. For micro enterprise and economic development, the three applicants were all recommended for funding as well. Um, all our current funding recipients. For public facilities, we are recommending $34,000 for leisure services, um, application for connections to trails and parks, for five sub-projects, all within Census Tracks 301 and 302 in East Athens. And just as a reminder about our public services funding, there is that 15% cap of our total allocation. And for those of you who are newer on the commission, um, we have changed our public services grant structure in the past couple of years. Um, in prior years, we had a three-year cap for any public service project, um, and a cap of $20,000 for the first two years of funding and $15,000 for the third year. Um, in 2018, we came to the mayor commission to revise that. And now our structure includes a minimum award of $10,000 with no cap on the number of years someone can be funded and also includes a 50% cash match requirement. And those are our public service challenge grant agencies. So nine of these agencies were recommended for funding. And again, you can see our funding recommendation and the Vision Committee priorities on the right. And that is our second page of funding awards. And next steps in schedule, we do have our agenda setting meeting in March, on March 16th, where we'll come to you with those recommendations. Um, we will then have a voting session on April 6th, and then we will give our recommendations and include our annual action plan and submit that to HUD in May. We'll initiate contracting in May as well. And then again, funding will be available July 1st, 2021. So I know that was breezing through that presentation. There's a lot of information there. So any questions?
Questions, anyone?
Uh, Mr. Myers can go first. I started her hand up before mine, but yeah, I'll go after her.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Jensen. I have a really easy, um, request, Haley, for me coming on here. When I looked at this earlier today, um, I see all these nonprofits, these organizations here, and I'm wondering, you know, who applied last year? How much did they get? So do you have any, um, grid that kind of shows the applicants and what they got, what they requested, what they got over like a five-year period?
We don't necessarily have a neat grid that compares it across five years, but we certainly have information on current funding recipients, um, and historical data, um, going back, which we can compile to share with the mayor and commission as well. But I don't have that available right now.
Oh, that's, of course not. But thank you. That would be helpful for me to get a little perspective and historical, um, perspective on this.
We'll do that. Thank you.
Thanks, Carol. And, and I can, uh, I can share some previous presentations of this variety with you too. Um, Tim?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, Haley, thanks for putting this together. The only thing I was wondering if you could also just email out to us, because I expect you to go through it right now or tonight. But, um, the, on the public service challenge grants, maybe just the reason that, uh, the ones, especially the ones that Vision Committee higher, higher prioritized weren't chosen. If you could just give us some little background reason on why those ones, I know sometimes it's because the programs wasn't really compatible with the funding, but if you could just give us a little bit of background reasoning, that'd be appreciated.
Sure. And in the interest of time, the short answer is that three of these applications upon staff review were actually ineligible. Um, generally, we try to do a thorough staff review before Vision Committee gets any of these applications, so we don't waste their time. Um, but with 41 applications, we missed a couple. Um, so two of them were ineligible due to, um, just ineligible CDBG activities, and one was ineligible because it was actually an incomplete application. But I can send out that information.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Uh, if I could just jump in, I just, uh, yeah, I want to echo Commissioner Jensen that any information we can get as to why the things were ranked as they were. And then also, I know some of the, I saw some of the funding requests weren't the full amount. So if there's an explanation as to like why which ones were chosen to get the amounts they did, um, and if, if there was any further indication about like which parts of a given proposal were going to get funded with that portion or something, um, that, that, that level of detail could be helpful. Uh, and I just wanted to share, I love that y'all used ranked choice voting for this. Um, and I would encourage, uh, I guess, Manager Williams, uh, to consider, uh, that model being adopted by departments whenever possible when there's long lists like this and, and by our committees in general. I think that's a really great methodology to use, and I'm super jazzed that y'all used it here.
Yeah. It, it made our jobs a lot easier, I will say. So we were excited that it worked out well, too. Um, and then just as a quick note about, um, why some agencies did not get the full amount of funding that they requested, um, a big theme that's behind all of our recommendations is just the reality of COVID and nonprofits operating in COVID. Um, for many of these agencies, they are current CDBG recipients. And when COVID hit in March and agencies weren't able to continue operations for several months at a time, um, we did give agencies the opportunity where we could to carry over funds into our current program year, which means that many of the agencies are actually, some of them just getting started on their current funding awards. Um, and for CDBG funds, there is a mandatory requirement related to timeliness expenditure of funds. Um, and when we start getting into large sums of money not being spent, it means we jeopardize our funding. Um, so that's a very short, large kind of response, but, um, we can definitely share some information about specifics about why we made the recommendations we did.
Thank you. And I, I mostly am just hoping that having those on hand can be helpful for if and when someone asks, you know, hey, why did this organization not get approved or something? We can have that for reference. So thanks.
Sure. Thank you.
Other questions or thoughts? All right, Haley, thank you very much. And, and again, this is lined up for an April vote. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. April 6th.
All right. Perfect.
Thank you.
Okay, Mayor. Uh, we're at our last item of the evening, the Greenway Network Plan map update. And, uh, a lot of work has gone into this, and I certainly want to, uh, thank the, uh, Coney River Greenway Commission. Uh, something you'll note about tonight's presentation, it's not done in PowerPoint, but rather in a story map. And, uh, Alex Bond is here to present on behalf of Leisure Services.
Thank you, Mayor Commission, Manager. Um, so my name's Alex Bond. I apologize, I'm not going to turn on my camera until after sharing my screen, um, just based on internet connection. Um, but I'm going to step through this real quick. I'll, uh, I'll be going for the gold when it comes to staff, uh, preciseness and quickness. So the Greenway Network Plan, um, it's our 2020 update. It is in a story map form, so you'll see me kind of scrolling through, but that optimizes for maps, which is a really nice thing when you're talking about maps. So what is the Greenway Network Plan, um, Greenway Network Plan or GNP? We update the maps every two years. Um, the written portion of the Greenway Network Plan is updated every five years. So 2021 is when you'll see that coming through. Um, the last set of approved plans by, uh, Mayor and Commission was in 2016. There was a 2018 attempt, um, but then there was just, uh, there was a bandwidth issue, honestly. And then the, um, just to understand that the Greenway Network Plan is conceptual, it's non-binding, we're talking way in the future. Um, so certain comments, and I'll get to that when I get to the public input session, but there are some times that people see the maps and worry that it's in their backyard. And we'll kind of talk a little bit more about that. So the Greenway Network Plan is something the ORGC is by ordinance putting through every, um, you know, whenever the time comes. And it's one of the few deliverables that they have, um, to you guys. So I'm presenting on their behalf. Uh, a big shout out, this picture is perfect. Uh, this story map and all the map work would not be possible without our park planners, especially this guy right here, Daniel Sizemore. Big shout out. Um, so I'll just keep on stepping through this. Um, so the Greenway Network Plan was the only game in town for many, many, many moods. And what it's kind of morphed into, this year, we're trying to break out the different systems within the county to show, yes, the Greenway Network Plan has had all these lines on it, but now there's Athens Demotion. Now there's all these other partnerships around town. And we really wanted to, um, kind of maybe take this year, maybe take next year as we step through the language of the Greenway Network Plan and, and identify, this is within the Greenway, the right, the Greenway Buffer Zone, the Riparian Zone, uh, as defined by ordinance. And then all the rest of these trail alignments are, are something other. And so talking about those networks, we've got a couple Athens Demotion lines pulled in. Again, this is not the whole plan, but these are ones that without them, the Greenway Network Plan doesn't quite make sense. We've also got another partnership network that talked about Airport Loop, and you can see that there. We also have these trails that have been on the Greenway Network Plan for years. Um, but they're, again, they're out of the river corridor, they're out of the, the creek zones. So they're, um, a new layer we're calling urban trails, uh, that, you know, like Cleveland Road, um, it's not a creek, it's not a river. Next, we've got the Firefly Trail, uh, just showing our original relative trail plan for the Firefly Trail, um, and a quick link to their, uh, 5123, um, group. We've also got the Athens Line, which is the possible next relative trail option. Uh, it's been on the Greenway Network Plan for many, many years. And then finally, we get to the Greenway Network itself, which is the rivers, creeks. And we also wanted to include the water trails, because that's something that we're not going to leave out our blue trails. You can all, you see our existing launch of Ben Burton. Uh, we recently found out that we were a grant recipient for Princeton Mill. Very excited about that. So, um, that's a match with SPOS funds. So that one will be coming, um, to design sometime soon and, uh, we'll officially have a blue trail. It'll be awesome. Um, so stepping into also, this is a little bit of history. Um, we've got 2016, you can see the dark stuff is existing and the pink stuff is funded. And then take a step into the future and in 2020, this is what it's looking like now. Um, so all of these lines, whether they're existing on the ground or funded, are not part of the plan for comment. So when we go to the public comment portion, again, these things are already in process and they have their own public input when it comes time for the actual design to be done. Um, I can zip through this really, but, um, these things are either funded through 2011 SPOS projects, they, they are funded through T-SPOS 2018, or they're funded through SPOS 2020. Also want to highlight real quick, uh, there are three defined typologies in the Greenway Network Plan. Um, these are things, especially when you guys were talking about the Firefly earlier, I was thinking about these slides. So we have our primary corridor, which is mainly along the rivers and, and our main relative trail routes. Those are paved 12 to 14 concrete. We also have these, uh, secondary, which are typically 10 to 12, also concrete. And then we also have identified tertiary corridors, and those are a little more, there's a little more leeway with those as identified, like the Airport Loop is one. We've talked about a natural surface or, you know, resin gra, um, gravel. So that's a six to 10. So what we have here is the pre-public input map, and I'm going to step through that for a second, because I've got a better way to show you guys. But we did do a lot, we had public input open and we got a lot of comments. I'll even shift over if I can to, we were able to put together a, um, dashboard, interactive dashboard that kind of summarized all these comments for us. Um, I don't want to spend a lot of time on that, because I've got a su, a couple summaries for you guys. So we received 123 comments for 45, um, different people. Um, you can see here, we just asked in general, how do you feel about this trail segment? There were 42 different trail segments to comment on. And overall, people were positive. There were a couple neutrals and, and I think only one comment that was, uh, a negative feeling towards something. We also, uh, 96.75, the respondents were residents of ACC. Um, and you can even see broken down by that zip code. We also, um, asked people what they preferred this trail segment they were commenting on to be a high priority for funding, a medium priority for funding, and a low priority for funding. And that informs the written portion of the, the agreement that we're playing, because that's actually where we step into what is going to be ORGC's request for SPOS or T-SPOS funding. We asked people generally, what do they do on our trails? Um, and people were able to select multiples. This is really, really where we can spend a little bit of time. Um, we've got our 2016 map here. Make sure I click explore. We've got our 2016 map here. So this shows everything that was approved by Mayor and Commission back in 2016. We've got our, um, 2020. This is everything that went to public comment. And then after getting all that public comment back and, um, bringing it back to the, um, planning committee that we have in the ORGC, this is our final map. And we actually, there were many changes. Um, one really neat thing is through the public input, we had several groups reach out to us, hey, we've, we've had this, um, plan approved by Mayor and Commission already, like the Epps Bridge, um, lines were added that were on a different plan that you guys have already had a look at before. Um, the, um, build grant, North Avenue Build Grant line got added to this map. Um, so there were some changes made in, in the end, um, that were impacted by all that public input we got. So the final product is going to be these four print maps, uh, that'll be attached to the, um, submission, the, the agenda review. So, um, we've got a west map. We've also got our northeast. We've also got our northeast. We have our southeast. And we have our inset. So these are the four maps that will come in for approval by you guys. So with that, if there are any questions, I can leave the maps up, and we can look at anything specific. If not, I can close my screen.
That was great, Alex. Alex, is this version of the presentation available to us? I know we got just the screenshots in the packet.
Yes, sir. Yeah. I've been working with our GIS office to make sure that there's a login issue to get to this, because it is hosted on our GIS platform, so we're working through it. The, these PDFs are verbatim what was sent to you guys, but the story map and the interactive map are something we're working to get to you.
Thanks for that. Questions or observations, anyone? Carol?
Yeah, I know it's late, and I don't have any particular ones to point out, but I do want to thank Alex and Daniel and all the others who've worked on this, because I know people put hours and hours into it. And I know during this COVID year, that there have been more people on these greenways than I've ever seen before. And I think there's just much more appreciation and all different kinds of people in all different kinds of places. So this is just really wonderful. I just want to thank you for your work on this.
Happy to do it.
Other thoughts? Jesse?
I got a question. Not sure how super applicable it is to these maps and things, but I am just curious if he could speak to, I had a couple different people ask me in the past couple weeks about this. The decision to use concrete as opposed to asphalt, or like some of those more like recycled tire rubberized surfaces, just kind of why we do that, and if that's the plan moving forward for everything.
That's a great question. I do know when it comes to asphalt versus concrete, we have done cost comparisons with the two. There's also, for us, you know, so my division gets to deal with the trails when there's a problem. And patching concrete, we can do a lot faster, more efficiently, and it can be safer for bike riders, is usually what we like to think about. You can see we do use the impervious concrete where we can, where it makes sense to do that, but that actually does a patch as well, so sometimes we run into problems with that as well. As far as the rubberized surfaces or things like that, I have not been part of any conversations where we've looked into that. I would just say it's probably more of a durability question.
Thanks.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Melissa.
So I have kind of a practical question. When it comes to developers proposing projects that overlap with proposed trails on this map, are they obligated to accommodate those trails? What is the process, you know, as they propose their development and go through the planning process? Do they have a conversation with y'all at some point? Because just last week, we did approve a project that incorporates some Greenway Trail on Tracy and Barber. I'm trying to see if it's in the, on the map, I can't really see. I'm zooming in as much as I can, but the roads aren't marked. There's also, you know, a proposed, future proposed trail going through, next to Chase Street Elementary. You know, and if that property were to, I mean, there's evidence that, you know, it might be in the target for development sometime soon. What is the developer's obligation to honor this map?
So truly nothing in the current way that it's established right now. So the Greenway Network Plan is like a vision of the future. It kind of has always been that in its current iteration. I agree, it sometimes has caught us off guards when we've seen these things come before, you know, you guys, and we see that there's trail incorporated and on it. Some developers have reached out to us, hey, we checked on this map and we see that there's something down Barber Street specifically, like West Clocks Development. They've reached out to us, and sometimes we can work with them, other times it doesn't. So we've been talking to the Planning Department about what that looks like. But for us, again, some of these lines for the network may not have any funding tied to them for a while. That's probably the best I can answer that question.
Well, I'm just considering like the, you know, issue we're facing right now with the Firefly Trail and, you know, facing a trail segment that is now basically private property and, you know, the property owners have built upon it. You know, and we could be facing the same thing with this Greenway unless we have some kind of ordinance in effect that kind of prohibits developers from building upon it, whether or not, you know, we have the funding to build the trail ourselves. So I'm just, you know, I mean, what is the point of having these, you know, future proposed trail maps if we can't enforce them or prevent them from being overcome by private development? I mean, I know it's a great envisioning tool, but unless we have some kind of ordinance on the books that has some teeth in it to assure that the property is left open for future public use, you know, or at least that small corridor of the property, at least some small easement through it. We could be in this place over and over again.
I think a good example highlighting that, Melissa, is the kind of back and forth we had with the property off Carriage Court. Obviously, ultimately, we purchased that property, you know, but that was a case where, you know, we had to negotiate with a private property owner. And certainly, I think I've seen you and other commissioners, in the context of rezonings, you know, identify those, you know, trail segments or bike ped projects, you know, that may bisect across a property and, you know, have been careful to highlight that. And I think, in my observation, planning staff does a really good job of that and being conscious of those points of intersection.
So the Planning Department, when a project is proposed, they would have that conversation with the developers saying, hey, this is on our future Greenway map, you need to incorporate it in your project.
I certainly noticed that emerge. I don't know that I can say that that happens 100% of the time, but I've certainly seen a couple of projects where those elements, and obviously the Tracy Street project that we just approved a week ago was a good example.
Yeah, I mean, and I know that Tracy Street project was done just, I mean, I didn't even realize there was Greenway Trail, proposed Greenway Trail through there. The developers, just out of the kindness of their own heart, did their homework and chose to accommodate it. But, you know, that's kind of a rarity unless they're asking for something. So I wonder, I mean, what can we do to develop some kind of ordinance or trigger or policy whereby at the very, very front end, developers are made aware of these trails and have some obligation either to maintain that easement corridor or build the trail themselves?
Blaine or Judd, is that something that, you know, we may want to do a little research on and determine how could be built around that prospect?
Of course we can. The transportation corridor, which is a part of this approval that you'll be asked, you know, that's got a certain status, I think, if you remember with the Mark development, some of the work we did there. But, you know, short of, there's no way that, other, short of condemnation that you can require, I think, a private property owner to observe an easement. And of course, we were talking about some of the problems you run into that in the Firefly Trail earlier tonight. So, you know, as Alex said, this is just laying it out there. You know, much like the Firefly Trail, it may take a slightly different route, but the important thing is connectivity. And we don't want to alarm anybody if they see their property near or on here. This is just talking about the future and trying to telegraph points we'd like to connect and general areas we'd like to traverse.
If we can't require, could we incentivize? You know, we're talking about an inclusionary zoning policy, you know, could we develop a, you know, trail network incentive policy where, you know, if someone does begin development on a property that is on this map somehow, that, you know, they can be given a carrot?
Well, I'll tell you, one really good opportunity for us is on sewer easements. And so if we can call out, Alex, those of these that generally follow sewer easements at the time that we get new construction easements or temporary easements, or we, you know, we go ahead and get the property owner, we pay them a little extra to get the Greenway usage as well. We can't, we can't just, we can't use a sewer easement for trails as some folks have been doing, because they're maintained and they look like they're walkable, without having to express permission from the property owner. I don't know if that makes any sense. That's one opportunity for trying to kill two birds with one stone.
I'd just like to identify parts of this trail, or, you know, this network, that are in danger of being developed over, because they are in areas that are ripe for redevelopment or, you know, high interest development areas, so that we can get ahead of the ball and, you know, be prepared to have that conversation with the developers or acquire the property or, you know, offer some carrot. I mean, it would be nice to just have a policy on the books whereby planning initiates that, you know, off the bat. Or if there is, you know, a map out, I mean, are they obligated to look at this map as part of the development proposal? Is that one of the boxes they tick when a developer, you know, begins that plan's review process? Do they look at this map and see if it overlaps with their project at all?
I'm not aware of anything. I will say, our park planning office does get included with most of those notices of plans review and have given comment. I don't know if it's an automatic.
Can we have a discussion about making some kind of automatic policy by which this, you know, developers are specifically made aware of this map and asked to accommodate it from the very beginning? So we're not, I mean, oftentimes, those of us behind the rail aren't made aware of the details of a project until it's before a set an agenda meeting, and by then it's really too late to accommodate something like this. Unless they've, you know, managed to do it themselves on the front end.
Well, Alex, the level of this map, I don't, is it parcel specific? Or is it just really general in nature, following rivers and streets and things of that nature?
Yeah, thank you for that lead in. And again, this might be the last year that the Greenway Network Plan is the Greenway corridors and all these other systems. There might be, this might be the time that we're looking at shifting to more of a, this is the bike ped map of Athens Clark County, and let the Greenway Commission worry about the Riparian corridors, and there's a larger conversation there. But to answer your question, no. The one problem, I mean, we've put a lot of time into this, our park planners have put a lot of time into this, but it is not parcel specific. A lot of the lines are trace easements, when we can do that. But some of the public comment we got was, hey, this line goes right through my house. And it's, again, we're not able to, we're not designing to a construction level or even with all the contours at the fine detail that we need. That's about, we may need Planning Department's input on some of this.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I'm saying, is that the interface between planning and this particular plan here, I feel like there needs to be a clear policy about that.
We'll do a little bit of digging and follow up. Carol and then Tim.
Filling up on that, I don't know, the legal and the future effect. The Greenway here, although it's, I know it's not parcel specific, it's down at the end of my street, coming over into someone's property who I know doesn't want it and going behind those houses. What I'm more concerned about in my mind, I've always thought, oh, that's just a vision, right? But now we've had these discussions of the Firefly, and people are saying, we've had that vision and it should be there. And I'm like, oh, so, you know, to address like sort of Melissa's point here, is what is the obligation? Can I get some sort of like response on that? Because, I mean, if you look at, I mean, how many, how many miles is all of this? Do you have any idea, Alex?
No. I don't know if we've added that up.
Right, I mean, it's so many miles here that you're looking at, but I know that for people in my neighborhood, if they did see this, they're gonna like freak out, right? And so I would like to have some statement from someone or the attorney's office just sort of clarifying that this is a vision and this is not a legal, you know, this is, we can't come back later. It's sort of the opposite of what Melissa's saying, but for the homeowner, you know, some of these people are going to sell their houses. And, you know, I can hear the discussion now. You bought that house and you knew that plan was out there. So I guess I just want to have what, how this, just sort of a legal question of when this does impact people's property. Are we making a commitment? What do we tell landowners? Are we going to come back 20 years from now and say, we had this, we've had this here for 20 years, you haven't said anything? And they'll be going, well, that commissioner over there said this was just a vision. So that's, I sort of want a response on that, so I can understand how that plays out for individual homeowners.
Well, if I might, and we can use the Firefly as an example. So that project's been talked about, I don't know, for 20 years. And even at this late date, we are talking about a potential alternative route. So this is simply a master plan. It is meant to be to telegraph where we want to go. In all likelihood, this will be built out using SPOSS or T-SPOSS funds. And we follow a very specific process where, you know, the funding's approved and then the user group brings forward project concepts to y'all. And it's a public input process, and you do the project concept, preliminary plans, you inform routes that are taken. And that, and that process is when we start to get more parcel specific, after going through a project concept. So, or an opportunity may come up with a sewer line or something of that nature, and we would come back to y'all. But it's hard, I know we're showing maps, and maps are real points on the earth, and people will see that. And I appreciate you clarifying that, Commissioner Myers, but it is simply a master plan, and that's, it's very high level, y'all.
I wonder if you could, I mean, I don't know if you want, I wonder if you could take that, what you just said, Blaine, put that little box, out of box, and put it somewhere on here. Because, I mean, that's what I'm thinking, it's going to go through a process when it gets to funding, and there'll be public input, and there'll be alternative things. But, you know, I have a lot more experience with this than most people. So I'm just wondering if we could put that somewhere, just a little set aside.
Manager, if I may. So again, these four maps are part of, or they partner with the written portion of the Greenway Network Plan where a lot of that is highlighted. So again, some of those, a lot of the stuff in that speaks to processes and even priority. That, in the written portion is where priority is decided, which again is public input driving ORGC recommendation to y'all.
Alex, could you just share that whatever is applicable with us, so we have that? In case people reach out? Thank you.
Any other questions, Tim?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And thanks, Alex, this map is fantastic and exciting, especially seeing all the stuff happen on the west side that's planned. And it's actually, some of it's actually funded too, so that's exciting. My one thing is, and it came up as we were discussing, the Epps Bridge Parkway corridor study, was the focus of using some of the gas and Georgia Power easements for connectivity, specifically around trails like this. And I know the mayor's actually, you know, got some conversations started. Georgia Power, which is really exciting, but I would like, apart from the planning process, maybe be able to identify some of those easements that right now, you know, they're never going to be developed, that could possibly be used to connect some of that tissue in there that connects in those other areas. Sometimes I've looked at maps, I'm going through, and I look at those easements, I'm like, man, that cuts right through and connects those two corridors that we're trying to get to. So I'd love to see that in the future, that at least looked at and possibly overlapped somewhat on these maps.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, and I think particularly as we get kind of deeper into engagement with utility providers, you know, a couple pilot projects would ideally then become exactly what you're describing. what you're describing, Tim, you know, this is sort of whole new overlay, as comfort level develops. Thinking very briefly back to kind of one of Melissa's comments earlier, one incentive that we have, you know, at least in six areas of town, are the tax allocation districts. And so, you know, and, and exercise that I know I've gone through, but you may want to as well, is as you look at those tax allocation districts, look at the trail segments within them, because that does provide some, some financial incentive for developers. All right, anyone else? Alex, thank you for this, I appreciate it. And, and just, you know, as, you know, as you were able with GIS to kind of work out, sharing a link to that full sort of dynamic presentation, we'd appreciate it.
Not a problem. Thank you. I know it's late, but appreciate it.
All right, everybody. All right, we came in under five hours, can you believe it? It's, it's rare night, but you have accomplished it. Lift yourselves high, enjoy some dinner.
Thank you, good night.